There are others many who needs a special touch from their parents. I always ask them to do so. Forgive us for all short. Grant Wilson and I, for the deal with the issues at hand, we can be good representatives of the people, factors, constituents, and all those of our county. Miss Cady, right now, I just thank you and Jesus. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you have not signed this document, please do so. Council in front of you are probably in minutes. Please hold me down. Oh.
That means it's on.
Right.
There we go. Thank you, Sheba.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes dated April 9th, 2024, as well as the special meeting minutes dated April 22nd, 2024. All right, well, I will vote, or I'll make a motion, we vote on the minutes dated April 9th, 2024.
Motion's been made, it's our second. Second by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes dated April 22nd, 2024, for the special meeting regarding the jail.
Motion's been made, it's our second. Second by Nick. All those in favor? Motion carried. Old business, code enforcement officer.
So, the last meeting, you guys had asked for additional information, which I said to you all in three emails. I'm not sure, no one else, no one responded to them, so I didn't know if you all received them or...
I did not. I did send, probably just came in.
I said it was not, we wanted to know.
I apologize, I just used the other one.
So, I essentially got six different job listings or job descriptions from different places here in the state of Indiana. Most of them are just individuals who work within the department. One happens to be, there's a lady that works as code enforcement for one county. So, I don't remember what else I've provided for you guys, but are there any questions?
Susan, I said they also should have received an email from Kelsey Hanny that spoke that there was no additional burden on the court system that was being vital following the county law. So, there was no issue with her. We also have John here with us, 30 years plus experience in the county health department to speak on behalf of these issues. We're going to let him do his two cents here.
Well, I've been fighting this for about 35 years. I've lived in the county before. And unfortunately, we do have absolutely beautiful towns. It can be so much better. Because every corner of this county has got a slum and derelict buildings. And I don't see it getting any better. Drive roads everywhere. And by the time you think an area's cleaning up, it turns around and gets worse. And it's been that way for several of our little towns. I think I even have to name them, I don't know where they're at. But for me to go out and try to push some of these issues in the past, if people won't do the right thing, they will. But if they don't, you know, they'll throw their nose at me or somebody like me and just go ahead and do their thing. On very rare occasions, we'd have county attorney to jump in, and I don't mean necessarily current one, attorneys in the past, that had helped with a little something here, a little something there. But one of the constraints of that is money, from all the prior attorney would pay them per hour. And I've heard more than once, don't spend any money, don't spend any money, because we didn't have it and I don't want it. And because $3,000, $4,000, that's nothing. You can spend $10,000, $20,000 on just one, one single issue at times. So, you know, we gotta get something done if we want to see this thing approved, you know. The biggest part of this unsafe building ordinance has got to do with, I think it's a common misconception of throwing people out of their houses, that is not the point, I repeat, not the point. The point is, some of these hundred-year-old buildings that have fallen down in on themselves, there's safety hazards, there are fire hazards, they attract all kinds of crazy things. And, you know, we need to go, I think that's the primary focus of this unsafe building ordinance, is to address these isolates. And 99.9% of the time, there's nobody legally limited, but these structures also harbor a place for homelessness. So, you know, any step that can be taken towards eliminating these things, the better off the county's gonna be, especially for the health department, especially for the building department, especially for commissioners, and ultimately you guys. So, you know, that being said, you know, I'm kind of leaving the fact that...
I've got a question, John. I know in the past, when you come across an issue like unsafe septic and all that, and you've not been able to, you know, enforce what's already on the books, how would a code enforcement officer now make that...
By far and large, I don't have problems with septic. I have problems, but I'm able to deal with it. I've got a state statute called unfit for human habitation. You don't want to fix your septic, you can't afford it, bush comes to shove, the rule says no less than five, no more than 15 days of vacating the premises. So, I can fix the health issue. What they also does not do is dumb address the building. And that's been my problem. I've made numerous houses unfit for human habitation and have yet to put anybody out on the street or in a car or office. And, but you just, you have to use the discretion. And, but like I said, I've got that to fall back on. I usually don't give any push. Every once in a while, I've had to ask for a little assistance out of charity, but hadn't been very often trying to provide for myself. So, there to that.
So, our request is, is to take, to appropriate the $50,000 from the storage unit. It won't be that much, because we won't spend that much, because we're almost halfway over the year. This would be starting mid-year. So, what I had provided to you at the last meeting, I do apologize for not being able to be here, but the, what would be is, we would enlist that both the current inspector is a code enforcement, plus the new person would, they would be dual-dutyed. They would be code enforcement plus inspectors, so that they can both interchange jobs. If needed, one's out, the other one can do, if needed to. The amount of money that was appropriate, if appropriated, you know, taking the $50,000, paying a part-time person $25,000, and giving the current position a $10,000 raise, and then using $5,000 for a vehicle fund, and then the rest of it would just stay in the fund as a cash balance inside the fund for any appropriation that needed in future, if needed to hire a dumpster or do any payment from it.
Susan, well, the gentleman now that does inspection, is he going to pick up extra work? Why would we have to justify this?
He's currently doing this, he's currently doing this, but because of our inspection schedules getting more and more, so we currently have about 88 complaints from the last four years. Three, only three have been fixed or brought up to clean premises.
When you get these complaints, are you sending out a beverage or something?
We do, after we go out and do a physical evaluation of the property, we take pictures, we write up a report, and we send out the information explaining what needs to be cleaned up.
So, why is it that out of 88 complaints, with the current workforce that we have in place right now, only three of them?
So, the, the reason is, is that it's not just what we're doing, inspections pay us to come out there, so they're priority, number one, because they're paying us and they, they want us out there at a certain time. We have already sold 132 building permits, over 55 that were sold this time last year. We have, plus, we have all the 200 rents from the previous year, and any permits that were previous to that, that have paid to renew their permits. So, it's not just what we're doing right now, but we're working on last year's, because those permits are good for a year. So, if you bought it at the end of the year, you're still good for the rest of this year, but it's backlog.
Three out of 88, though, that...
Yes. Plus, there is one, there's a couple people here tonight who would like to speak on a property that has actually been a complaint since '06. We've had a complaint on the books since '06, and nothing has been done, been able to be done to this property. And it is house, property, it, I mean, the trailer alone is in decor, is in, had a tree laying across it, and there's someone still living in it.
So, how is it that because we haven't had this enforcement officer?
We didn't have an ordinance to enforce.
Yes.
In all this period of time, the 30-some years that John's talking about, there was never a proper ordinance in place. We now have that.
So, we currently...
And we're being enforced by the county attorney. Have no extra charge to the county because he's on a flat rate.
We currently have, have had, in this, since I've been here, at least three or four houses that we couldn't do anything about. They're not houses that are occupied, they're houses that either don't have a septic system that is working, can't put a septic system in, but there're squatters going into these houses, there're, I mean, I've had complaints from just the Qnot area of houses that people would like for, to be gone, because they know that squatters have been there, the police have been called to the property before. A lot of those places are being cleaned up now. There's a lot of people buying up property in Qnot and, and removing the structures that have been, where John and I both have had one property alone, they had multiple squatters in there at different times, but the house had unfit for human habitation, and people just kept getting into the house and staying there for long periods of time. So...
Susan, is your office open on Monday?
Back open, yes.
Back open?
I had to take off, so, I have excessive amount of vacation time and comp time and sick time. So, I had to take off several Mondays, so that I could eat into that time.
But the building inspector didn't...
The building inspector had inspections those days, so he was in and out of the office those days.
So, probably had no access to buy a...
A building permit?
Yeah.
No, no, because I was out of the office. And if the inspector's out of the office and I'm out of the office, then no, we can't sell building permits.
And you weren't here last month, but I'm sure you heard my concern, and that's probably a year ago, whenever you were paid out for your comp time.
I was paid out in 2022.
Okay.
So, it's been two years.
Two years ago, we asked, or I asked, because I remember.
And I, and I remember that, I do remember that. And I said I would try, because I don't know about it.
I voted a certain way, because it was...
But I gain, I gain comp time as well. So, when I go to meetings, like tonight's meeting, I gain comp time being here, because I'm on county time. I have, I have two meetings a month that I garner, as the secretary, garner comp time. Those meetings could be an hour, they could be three hours, I don't know, depends on what's on the agenda.
So, if it was a year and a half ago, or two years ago, whatever the months, however the months lined up, it wasn't, Andy, I'll, I might be able to do this or whatever, because I voted a specific way, based on the response. And the response was, the response, response was, I can manage this.
You took me down to exactly, whatever the time was, it was 250 hours, I think it was, total. And I garner seven hours every two weeks. So, count that back up. If I can't take a day off, because there's something going on, I have to send out notices. I have, there's a lot of things that I don't see...
Then why was the response in the affirmative, I guess?
I told you at the time that I would try to, I do remember saying I would try as hard as I could, because that is, we make money, we're the only department that has to be self-sufficient. If I'm not there, we're not self-sufficient.
I think this was next point.
Are you making engineering now?
We are, we are, we, we may, we've garnered, look, I got the printout here.
And so, but these, this new employee, though, will be paid for, maybe $50,000?
The first year I started, and I was only there from November to, to the end of December, I had, that year, they only garnered $66,000 for the whole department. I made 87 the next year, I made 90 the next year, 96, I'm already at 52. That's more than half of what I made last year.
What's your budget?
A hundred and something.
Who do you think you're taking in now?
I, I, I usually roll over about 30,000 every year.
How many permits did you say this year compared to...
I've already sold, well, if you go driveway demo, electric, 233 already this year.
I think that's a lot, more than 20, 30, yes, I can handle.
Yes.
And, well, I will vouch for it, I went in to ask for a couple of questions. I was in the office maybe five minutes, and someone in there, of course, they had this to do, so I left, and before, I mean, like, in a matter of 15 minutes, they were lined up, there were four more people to get in, to maybe end up paying this, or anything.
So, it's not just building permits. We do mapping, we do the storage units, we do planning and zoning. You're looking at a department that's five, at least five departments in one. And, and if, if people want to speak to me specifically, they may not, they may just leave a message, and I have to call them back. The days that I was off, the Mondays that I was off, I had between eight, 11, 12, 13 voicemails from the days before. I had to answer all of those voicemails, plus everything that was coming in that day, plus anyone that came into the office that day. I'm not...
I wanted to kind of direct, bring it back to, because we've gotten off on your comp time and all that.
Yes.
I want to bring it back to code enforcement.
I've got, I've got a comment I've been wanting to make.
Okay.
So, the bottom line is, when we were here last time, there was specific things that, some of us addressed, and, and basically, here's the way I remember it, and folks chime in if I'm wrong. I know I, and with the support of some others, made the point that they wanted to be a uniformed officer that fell under the discretion of the sheriff for the role. The second thing was, with the, I don't remember the raise, the pay raise, but maybe...
That was on the pay.
Okay, okay. And there was something else, oh.
The judicial side was a part of the conversation you had.
The judicial side was, judicial side was...
On the judicial side, they said there was nothing, that they would cover it, there's no impact to them. The, the problem with a code enforcement person being a law enforcement person is that they have to be, go to continuous training. So, once a month, they would go to training on top of just being in the office, or out in the field. So, it's a continuous, they have to know the building codes, they have to learn the building codes. So, I'm not sure, Ryan would be able to speak more to that, is if a deputy would want to do that on top of the training, they have to do.
Well, Ryan did speak to it, and that's one of the reasons why I'm in favor of it last month. Hi, Ryan. Can you hear okay?
I can't hear squat.
Okay. I, they, the codes and the continuous training was brought up, clearly, I support the, the law enforcement chain of command in this, and the response was that the training and the code enforcement learning that is an obstacle, and I, I just wanted your two cents, if you've got time.
I don't know if anybody's ever seen the Indiana IC Code Book, it's about that thick. Laws and codes are put into a book for a reason, there's no way you will memorize everything. I don't see that it would be more difficult for an officer to look up a code that the county has established than it is from look up one that the state has established, is my opinion.
Yep.
I, I think our officers are more than capable.
I agree.
But I don't know anything about codes, so, yes, we would all have to learn, I mean, we obviously are savvy on criminal law, not civil law or, or code violations, but I think that they can learn, just like they learned IC codes.
And you still stand by the quote of last month that said, it would be, you would feel more comfortable if the individual, number one, was trained and pleased to speed resolution and was able to protect themselves.
I would get, I would feel more comfortable that way. Again, it's not my department, but if it was somebody under my command, I want them to have conflict resolution, de-escalation, all of those tools on their tool belt when dealing with confrontation. And it's going to be confrontational, but that's my, that's what I would want. I wouldn't send a rookie, as I said that night, I wouldn't send a rookie to deal with a very hostile, emotional environment without someone who sees him.
I think that's why, where I'm at, because when this whole code enforcement officer was, was brought to the table, it was going to be a deputy because of that, because I don't see a benefit for just hiring somebody, somebody off the street to do this type of work when...
But you already do, that's the thing, you, the code, the inspectors, part, part of this, very small percentage of this job is already...
I did read the job description today, so, yeah.
So, every inspector you've had since...
But that was kind of the part, that was what was brought to us, that people were in your department were concerned about going and, you know, handing out these, these violations because of feeling, you know...
I mean, if the world's getting to be a safer place, then that would be, but it's not.
I'm just saying, what's, was brought to the table at first, so I'm just, if that's changed, then...
It's expensive, that was part of the, that was backed off.
Yeah.
This is $30,000, $40,000 difference.
Exactly. Yeah, we'll push 75,000.
Because of the being ruled out, you're talking time, I think that's my...
Yeah.
Like, an officer for me is going to be roughly $79,000 with benefits.
But that's not including car...
But that's not including the police car rates.
So, so you're looking at, at $50,000, at $25,000 to $79,000 plus vehicle plus...
And the county attorney takes care of the law side of the sheriff department.
To me, to me, this basically is just hiring another person in your office to help shoulder the load. I mean, it's, we, we call it a code enforcement officer, but the building inspector, as you said, under the job description...
They would be trained to be a building inspector as well.
But what I mean, I, I've looked at, I read the job description today, and I was going to print it out, but I've been at the hospital with my mother all afternoon, so I did not get an opportunity to, ah, well, here we go.
But what we seem to be finding in resurfaces, there's no code enforcements throughout the state that are attached to the sheriff department.
So, I've talked...
Probably because of that expense, I'm assuming.
I haven't talked to Ryan since, or you, since our special meeting, or anyone, but there was a variety of options that were, were laid out, and some of them pertain. Do you have any updates, by the way, on jail?
I do, it's the next thing on the agenda.
Okay, so, one of the things that was brought up in the last meeting about the code enforcement officer was there's a funding stream in place from the rentals, okay? And obviously, that's generating income, whether it's a, I, I don't know where it's falling, we haven't taken a vote on any property, and there were some things we were looking into, and again, I don't know any of that, but...
I could update you real quick.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Continue to talk to Brett Franklin, he's still interested in doing a trade. We've cut that down to 10 acres instead of the 30, because he wants to keep that log yard back in the back quarry, which is fine, because a lot of that is unbuildable area, there's cliffs back there, and so on and so forth, so we basically would be able to... So, we basically would be able to retain the ten acres up front, have access off the main road coming in. Spoke to Sheriff White and Matt Milner about that, showed him the outlay that we sketched out on the flat. They're still interested in doing a trade, the commissioner still felt that that is a very good deal. And it would basically be, you know, a brace of dollar for dollar type thing. Huge benefit to the county, because we put a hundred and seven acres back on the tax roll that hasn't been off. It's taxed at aggregate, but it's still money that we're not getting right now. So, we eliminate hills and hollers out there, we gain ten acres out here for future growth, perhaps all the infrastructure that we need. Now, an interesting comment in my negotiations with Mr. Franklin, he said, Carrie, what are you doing with the storage building? Would you be willing to trade those? If Brett Franklin wants to trade for those, the county needs to keep those. He knows there's an income source there. That is just business one of one.
Well...
So, we have an opportunity to get a piece of property, swap property for property, give us a nice facility, be a very nice back there off the road, visible from the highway, yet not in the center of town. Sheriff White is still in huge support of that. I'll let him have any comments that he might make, although we've had several discussions.
I think it's a great location, it has the infrastructure we need, which is what's most important. Keeps out flood plain, keeps out, being able to expand in the future. You know, what we don't want to be is in a position where we end up with population boom, my population goes up, we have to add on, and be in a position where we can't do it at that location. If we have an area where we could add on in the future, then we're not having to go back in square one and try and figure all this out again. If we're going to do it, let's do it right the first time, and make sure we have room for expansion in the event that we need it. And there will be an event we need, we're going to need at some point, it may not be in my life, it may not be in yours, but, but our kids and our grandkids, it will be in theirs. So, let's not set them up for failure until...
So, with the fifty thousand, if we can get back to that part, this burdens nobody but the storage units. A fund that just, money goes into. This burdens no other, no other department, it doesn't burden any other fund source, no taxpayer monies involved in it, it's just simply the money off of the storage units, which is self-funding itself. It has a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in it currently, even after taking my five thousand out for my pay, which, trust me, is not, you would pay, be paying more to somebody else to manage those storage units.
No, we were paying twenty percent.
Yeah. You're paying twenty to seventeen thousand of the profits out to another source before this, so...
So, how much money is there to, how long can this maintain just with that money? Two years, three years?
So, the fifty, if we do it now, I mean, you, we, we would need to look at mid-year, next year, and what... But unfortunately, if you take the whole fifty thousand, and you then take another twenty-nine thousand, and then you have to buy a car, and...
No, I'm not talking about for the sheriff, I'm just talking about for the code enforcement officer, building inspector, the lady that sits right here.
Well, fifty thousand, if, because you've been hiring somebody half, mid-year, you're going to probably only use half of the twenty-five that's there.
Three years?
Two, I think.
So, if it doesn't work in three years, and you come up to the council and say you need additional appropriations, or we need money out of the general fund, and we say, sorry...
Yeah, if we're not so, since we've become self-sufficient, if we're not self-sufficient in three years to doing this, because this is a, this is being, is providing a service to the county that taxpayers are not paying for.
Okay, you're telling them self-sufficient because we're using the building monies, or because of the fines?
We're self-sufficient because we, we don't use any taxpayer money to fund our office. Everything comes out of what we bring in. So, the storage units would be the same thing, is you procreate money out of there, that money goes back in each year if you keep the storage units renting.
So, we should keep a plus...
Even if you close them right now, you can at least fund something for two years. At least fund something for a year, two and a half years out of that money.
So, you're willing to sit there and the commissioners as well, to say to us that if we would do this, and it would fall back on the tax roll, and we stop it, you're okay with that?
It's not funding itself.
But it's nothing, Nick. We have a lot of complaints out there, a lot of citizens are suggesting here this evening it's got issues.
If two years, got the bottom five percent of the worst of the worst of the worst in the entire county, and we just cleaned up that in two years, I'm good with that.
We made it, yeah, we made it.
And honestly, we had, there's been quite a few people that I've helped them get stor-, I get, helped them get dumpsters, so that they... Yes, one, a guy in Patricksburg was going to pay a lot of money. We found an option for a dumpster company to come and drop a dumpster, and he was so thankful that we got him a dumpster for so cheap, he's paying for it, we're not paying for it, but he has kept it, and he has filled it, and dumped at least two times since he's had it. And it's simply just trash that he has from rentals that he has on the property.
But these fines, right, I mean, if I understand in our last meeting, these fines would be more geared toward unsafe buildings, correct?
No, it's unsafe building and premises, so it is both, you're, you're looking at...
The only, the only thing that bothers me, I don't like a lot of wide verbiage, and, I mean, I don't want it to be subject to a lot of interpretation, I guess, is what I...
We have a lot of disorders in effect already, people just don't read them, we have junk, the number of vehicles that can be in somebody's yard, and I'm talking about what you're driving, I'm talking about what's got the hoods open and motors out of, transmissions laying in the yard, those kind of issues. And that's what some of these folks are here complaining about.
Yeah, I'd like to speak to that for a moment, if you guys don't mind. You know, me and some of my neighbors are here, but, to me, the main point that, that needs to be addressed is the teeth. I was scared, the, the coats are now there, but there's no teeth to enforce it, whether it's the, the, you know, sheriff's office, a new building inspector here, slash enforcement officer or what have you, there's no teeth to enforce it. We, we're, we're here to address a property in particular that is on our street, on our private road, we live up north of town here, all right? In two thousand, you, you guys remind me, I think it was five, four years ago or five years ago, a cherry tree, bigger around than two or three of us knew could get around, fell on this trailer. I, me and that man there cut it off and pulled it off. We assumed that the property owner was going to get that trailer out of there. He did not. He had, and he had a renter come in and sign an agreement that that person would repair that trailer in exchange for a reduced amount of rent. So, that trailer's been repaired, and it's still sitting there, and that couple's been living in it for some time. That, that couple also has multiple cars sitting around, but this man works on some, and...
Eleven, eleven.
Eleven, okay, thanks, John. But my point, the point is, the property owner is a man that's been in trouble with the law before. He's had, well, you know, Kirby, James Kirby, if any of you guys know the name, I'm sure, yeah, sure, some of you do. But anyway, the point is, nobody has the teeth to enforce him, or, or say, per se, make him do, you know, he's also got, on the edge of, the couple is not here tonight, right on the edge of their property, because they're, they're...
His dad's here.
His dad's here, okay. They're, they're, his, their property is behind his, so they've been right away, on the other side of it. He tried to rent out three years ago, he tried to lie off in a lot, so rented out his hunting property, telling people that they could come in and hunt, all around the property. I know because when I stumbled onto my property, and he told me what they, they had been told, okay? He currently has, pardon me, currently has an old camp, sitting there, that he's renting out for, I've been told four hundred dollars a month. Okay, Brianna said she thought it was four hundred dollars a month.
No water, no sewer, no lice, no nothing.
Okay, now, I know, because I looked up the code before we had the meeting with the attorneys, and Susan, is that right?
Yes.
And before we had the meeting with them, there's an Indiana code that he does not have a permit for that campground, that should be gone immediately. But as far as the camper, the trailer goes, it's been, Chris, you explained it, grandfathered in, because it's two places on one, well, something about being grandfathered in. But even the, even the house itself, at one point in time, John, could you address that, like, has, you know, had red tags on it a while now?
I, this particular rental house, which is in the middle between the trailer and the camper that he referred to.
Right, exactly.
I, I have made it unfit for human habitation twice because of sentencing. And it was vacant both times, renters weren't on the way out, and I, I've made it unsafe for those, for those reasons. Every time I do that, he'll go in and do just enough, and if those work. And that's happened twice. It is currently, tags off of it, there's new people in it, and so far, bless the neighbor's heart, their eyes and ears right there, if something's wrong, they'll tell you. Because I don't have any problems approaching this neighborhood. But that, he has skirted everything he can, this particular individual house. He had lots of junk cars at one time, he had appliance stores blown down, he was not buying appliance, junk appliances out there, a whole bit. We helped, our county court, and he still continues on these same venues.
Did you say that health department took him to court for that, and, is that what you said?
Yes.
So, how come, how, if he was taken to court, I mean, how is that still ongoing? Looks like that would...
Well, he blew the fight, he claimed it up to an acceptable standard.
The county attorney was not involved in any of this, or seeing any of it. Now, they will be. And that is our law.
Let's go. Let me, so...
Oh, we're leaving the dead horse here. I want to make a motion, in the first place, I've got confidence in the commissioners. And Susan, for one thing, to get competent people to hire, to do, do the job. And I, I know that if it needs sheriff support, I'm sure that I've got competence in Ryan, if they ask him to help him out on something, but ninety percent of the time, they probably don't have to go that far, if you let them know that they've got it cleaned up anyhow. I want to make a motion that we hire that, what you want, and we use the, the monies out of, out of your money to do that, to finish out this year, and let's try that and see if that helps, and get this mess started cleaned up. We beat this around a long time, and we need to try it and see what's up.
I second that. The motion's on the, the court, do we need a second before we have discussion?
I second, Andy second.
Okay.
Your comment was to the end of this year, can we get a year and a half, because we got the funds to support it? Six months isn't going to give us much.
Yes.
Did you make the mention of that motion, that's all I'm asking.
Yes, I'll make that in the motion for a year and a half, and by then, we'll know how, how smoothly work goes and stuff, and we'll see how it cleans up. And hope and pray that most of these people that had little problems know that if they don't get cleaned up, they'll have problems.
And, and...
And I think that'll be a lot of...
So, and, and I think you guys got support for what you're trying to pass here, but no one up here, and by the way, I'm surprised you haven't got more results just by wearing that shirt around your neighbor. But, there's no one up here that doesn't feel like something's got to be done. This is all about how it's done. Number one, and I, I get it, year and a half, and, and you said, and hope. Really, hope isn't a method here, and I, that's, and you said, well, let's give it two years, you know? Well, we're talking about expanding government to do it, all right? So, hope, I, I'm not a fan of. I do feel like, having been a uniformed individual for a lot of years, that uniforms get results, all right? Versus folks that aren't in uniform, and I do feel like as far as safety goes...
We'll, we'll put them in something like Ryan's got on now, I mean, it's not going to say sheriff on it, but it's going to say Ole County Code Enforcement, they're going to know who that individual is, they're not going to walk out there and wait.
Okay, if you have a, a badge that says Ole County Sheriff, or a badge that says Ole County Code Enforcement, there's a difference. The second thing is, I don't think we ran this whole storage thing to ground. I don't think the storage units now are going to be the place, but I feel like that stuff needs to be ran to ground before we go a specific direction on this, because we're talking fifty thousand dollars of a funding source. So, let's not get, you know, rest of failure here, because if it would be, there's got to be funding. The, the length of sustainability, she just said it herself, three years, and then we're out of money, all right? And that, you know, the last thing is, and that, again, with hope, is whether it's a year and a half ago or two years, I, I was led to go a specific path based on this is going to work. It hasn't worked. So, I feel like a lot of this is to shore up internal office stuff, and that's probably why we don't want to go with a law enforcement officer. My thing is, the safety of the individual, you go knocking on these doors in Q Not, in, in these different places, you better not bring a knife to a gunfight, that's, that's my point. So, and, and you told me last month, you know, that, hey, okay, Andy, you don't see it this way, what about, you know, if, if that option is there, and the option is there, and I want this person trained, the, the things that you brought up that were, well, because of training, I don't want, you know, I don't, that, that's an obstacle, no, that's a multiplier, training.
I never said it was an obstacle, I'm just saying, it's, it's an advantage. We don't get paid extra to do training, we don't, we don't get anything extra. They're trained to do our jobs, so this is something that they have to do. We pay extra to go to these training courses and stuff like that.
Sure, so, so with that, no one, no one wants this not, we want a remedy here, and it's, you're right, it's time. It's time for a remedy, but this isn't, in my eyes, the remedy force.
Well, I'll tell you, John, he does an excellent job, of course, he knows how to talk to people, and I don't know, have you ever had a gun drawn on you about your clothes? Clothes, it was in the pocket.
I'm telling you, the folks in the assessor office have been scared, there's a lot of folks that have been worried about that.
I can say, as a former assessor's office employee, I've never had a gun drawn on me, no one ever threatened to draw a gun on me. Yes, the men had guns drawn on them, but, well, when I was with them, they never had one person do that to me while I was with them. And we went on multiple different kinds of assessment things.
I don't care if you were with them or you weren't, if it was happening, it's still a concern.
But they only did it maybe a few, like, one or two times that I know of, ever.
The, this is the majority of the counties in Indiana and Indiana State, and they've never had any...
The only place that I could find that actually had a law enforcement officer was Terre Haute, the town, the city of Terre Haute, was the only law enforcement officer.
Amy, is that good enough for you?
No.
No, 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 I'm, I'm, I'm wondering.
And I think we shouldn't have hope, we should have goals.
Yeah, and, and this is another hope thing, and I'm telling you, if the world, if the world was getting safer every day, I would, I would agree with you on that.
I, I, we have to do something.
So, Susan, this individual you're going to hire, just one, is that right?
Just one.
Okay. Will work in the office enough that you will not, you will be able to write permits on a Monday, even if you take off?
Yeah.
Does there be somebody there to answer the phone and cover the office, is that right?
Well, if we can get him hired quick enough, because I got vacations coming up, so, I got two weeks of vacation coming up in June and July, so...
We've got a second problem, cop dot PTO, vacation in every office, we have people, it's five hundred plus, so, again...
I'm going to call for a vote.
I do have a couple of questions. So, I, I, I'm not opposed to the concept either, I think it's an important issue to get done. The thing that I'm a little concerned about is, you know, this is a big decision, it's a big step in a different direction than what we've normally taken. And there's obviously folks on both sides that would be concerned about that, the folks that are here, that have examples that they're dealing with. You've also got folks that... You've also got folks that are very pro property rights and, and feel they should not be told what to do, et cetera, et cetera, with their properties, and they should be able to make their own decisions. And I've, what I've not seen here is an actual proposal, like a comprehensive spelling out of, you know, who's going to appoint who, who's, who's doing the hiring of the individual, how do appeals get taken care of? Um, we, what are the rates for these positions that you're proposing? We've had little snippets, we've had, you know, the code enforcement sample job inventory or job description. We've had a fifty thousand dollar figure, we've talked about law enforcement versus civil... Yes, you have that chart.
Which was, how much per hour they would be making, how much per, or FICA, whatever, and how much the total would be at the end. The total was like twenty-four thousand dollars, um, or twenty-five thousand dollars, and that's after...
Part-time.
That was part-time, twenty hours a, that was for a twenty-hour work week. They would only work twenty hours, forty hours for two we, two weeks.
But again, we only had, we've only had snippets, we've not had a comprehensive proposal with X, Y, Z and all these parts spelled out. And one of the concerns I have that, after talking with a Knox County Commissioner, is they have a good idea down there. First of all, they use an actual code enforcement officer, they don't use law enforcement. But second, they have a, an advisory or, um, appeals-type board of citizens that...
That is in the, I believe that is in the ordinance, and it goes to the commissioners.
Right.
We take that off to the court system.
Yeah, so...
Right, so, so there is no, per the ordinance though, there isn't anything specific that's, it's just the commissioners, at the moment.
At the moment, but we're not going to be that deciding factor, that, that will be the attorney taking it to the court.
Okay, because I, I mean, I would want to see something substantive that actually spells out...
He has that in the proposal that he sent a couple of months ago when he was here.
Can we see that proposal or get, get a copy of it?
I've got a copy of that.
Not of that, but, I mean, I've got the copy of the ordinance, but as far as if there's going to be a layer...
I'd like to see tonight if we can, because like Earl said, we're beating the dead horse, kicking the can down.
Well, he's, he's got a motion on the floor.
So, so can we go ahead and make a decision on, this is something we're going to go forward with, and if we work these details out?
I would be more in favor of that, to be honest, I, I don't want there to be...
I'm not asking it to be in concrete tonight because there are issues.
There are.
So things to make, but I want these citizens to know, and, and I want to know as a commissioner, and I think there's some council members to do as well when we leave here, that, that we move forward in protecting our citizens.
Right, so the motion, and one moment, um, that's up to Polly. I would rather, I mean, the motion is to proceed, so I'm not in favor of doing that. But I, if the motion or there was some action to allow a final review and development of an actual final proposal for consideration that specifically decides code enforcement or law enforcement, uh, a board...
Pass the code, the law enforcement side, I think that...
Is, we never took a vote, do we know whether we support the law enforcement part or not? We've not made that decision. But I think we need to, we need to spell out those remaining details before I'm willing to actually vote on a final decision to change this. But that's just my, my opinion on it.
Anton, I think that's why we was going to have this next meeting, where we was going to have a, a kind of a roundtable discussion about this, where we could have maybe ironed all these things out. I agree with you, Anton, there's still a lot of things that is not zeroed in on, so how do we handle it?
Well, that's, and, but the motion that is on the floor is to proceed and go forward with it. Create the position, fund it for a year and a half, and proceed. I think we've got a lot more things we kind of need to get into place before I'm willing to actually approve of such a thing. I think it's in the right direction, but I just don't, I'm just not there yet.
All right, one more comment from the floor, and then...
So, I, I think that you guys need to get their teeth, because I have talked to Don many times. Um, he has red-tagged the house multiple times, there's septic leaks down the hill on my property where my will is at. These cars, there's cars sitting there with antifreeze, jugs on the hood, they're broken down. That's soaking in the ground, it runs down the hill. They don't have the teeth to shut these places down, so, and who do I sue? Do I come after Owen County to replace my will that's going to cost about ten grand? Or do I go after the homeowner that they can't do nothing about?
From what I understand, we do have the teeth now since we have the ordinance, is that correct?
We do have the ordinance, we have no one to go out and write those tickets and tag it and red-tag.
But I mean, it has been red-tagged before, correct?
This is a totally separate issue, totally separate issue.
The bottom line is, we, we, I don't think, again, you've got the numbers as far as a next step to enforcing. It's the proposal that you don't, that maybe, I don't know, we'll see, and that, I'll call for a vote.
Can we make an amendment to this?
Yeah, can I make an amendment to that? If they have a proposal up, they can go forward with it.
They, they do. They do, she just...
She broke it down in the last meeting.
She did. But, I mean, like, if, if it doesn't pass on for, I mean, I think everybody knows that, um, is it just going to be dead then? I don't, like, I think we are all in agreement that we need to enforce these, this ordinance that's already on the books. Um, it's just the way that...
And you're right, Polly, and that's already been decided, the ordinance is already here, there's nothing you guys can do about that. The decision you need to make, because you're going to fund it or you're not going to fund it.
I'll call for a vote once again.
All right, so, just for the record, we meant just for the record. Restate your, uh, since it's been a while since, since you made your motion, restate your motion.
I make a motion that we take their plan and have it set for a year and a half. We will fund it for a year and a half through their funds. Not out of the general fund, but through the funds of the, that come from the thing. And I think we need to go ahead and start it where we can get the enforcement officer and stuff. And if they do, if they do want to put an amendment in it, that, that don't matter to me. But I think we need to get something started to where we can get this done. I mean, we beat this round the horn for three months, and I think we need to get something started. And I don't think, I mean, we're over it.
So, call for, call for a year and a half as proposed.
Year and a half, you're going to put up with that?
Yeah, we'll try and see if, and, I mean, if, if it works and stuff, we can go forward with it. But we won't commit ourselves forcing a year and a half to begin. And I think with the, with the fines and stuff, if they, if they don't comply with the stuff, I think it will be self-sustaining for a long time.
I am, I'm kind of not understanding Anton's questions. What were you, you were saying, just one minute, clarify something.
So my concerns are, from day one, we have never had a comprehensive proposal for what's being asked for here. We've had snippets, we've had some dollar amounts thrown at us, we've had a couple emails that someone talked to a judge, we've got a sample job description. We just now had the discussion on code enforcement versus law enforcement.
You were here last week.
I was here in April.
We had a meeting that that was discussed, because we discussed the law enforcement versus the law.
We did, I don't, we never made a decision. I was here in March as well. I don't remember making a decision. Because as recently as April, we were debating it in our last meeting as to whether it should be or not.
I think it was a funding issue, and I don't think we ever officially...
We never officially made that decision, but I think we should, I think we should make that decision, but that's not in the motion. The other part to this is the layer of oversight. I think it's highly important that we have some kind of independent board, not the commissioners, that it just goes directly to to make the decision. Now, you mind you, you're thinking, eh, we don't really want to handle those anyway, and I don't disagree with that, I'm sure you don't. But at the same time, the ordinance is written the way it's written, and it has to be changed if that's not the intent. If you want to set up a separate group or extract the commissioners from that level...
If you look at it a little bit better, you'll find that it states that there is, it can be the commissioners for, it can be the county attorney.
So, I, I still think, it doesn't matter whether it's the attorney or commissioner, still the commissioners. I think you still need to have an independent group of some sort that handles that initial appeal.
We don't need a committee for everything we do in this county, there's nothing left to do.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, I still, I still think that if, if you have a large number of citi... One moment, let me finish. If you have a certain level of concern from citizens about their property, and you're going to go to their property and red-tag them, there has to be an appeals process, there has to be something that's spelled out. I don't think that the current way that the ordinance spells out commissioners and/or attorney is sufficient enough. That's just my opinion, I think that would need to be changed, I'd like to see that changed if that's the case. That's all I only concern with.
That is my concern as well.
Can I compare that to a speeding ticket though? If the sheriff writes a speeding ticket, he doesn't go to a committee or appeals, it, here's the fines, forty bucks, pay the ticket.
Well, we're dealing with a civil penalty here, we're not dealing with a criminal act, and they've got, they've got the courts. Yeah, well, but, but we're talking property use, property owners, and consequences for the owner of the property. And I'm not talking this owner, that sounds, that's a little different, but there are going to be, there are going to be cases where the property owner is going to want to have some kind of an opportunity to address the concern or the red-tag that they got.
All right, right, we, we've been, okay, we've had enough discussion, it's on the, on the floor. I call for a vote, all those in favor? All those opposed?
And I oppose because Anton has made an excellent point.
And I, I agree.
It's not against cleaning up, I, I, that's not the case, I understand what these people are dealing with.
I under, I understand everybody's, um, concern here, and I have, I have the same, just a minute, just a minute. All right, just a minute.
I'm with the health department in Indiana, and we went through the law enforcement, that's how we did it.
Excuse me.
I'm sorry, I'm leaving.
I'm... It's not, it's not dead in the water.
Yeah, so I'm going to make a motion that we proceed in setting up a final group or committee of the key stakeholders, which is what I suggested in April. We come up with an exact written proposal that spells out all these components in one place, addressing the issue with appeals, and spelling out the exact pay amounts, the amounts for the budget for the program for the rest of the year and 2025. Let's get this solidified to a point where we can actually make an informed and final decision on it. That's not saying we're not doing it, but I'm saying we need to finish the work, it's just not there yet.
I'm certain.
So, that's your motion.
All right, you have a second.
I second.
And I want to, we'll discuss.
Okay.
So, the bottom line is, wait.
Excuse me.
So, the bottom line is, there was whatever about the speeding ticket or, you know, what are the differences or whatever, look. He's got the, he's got a motion on the floor. I'm not going to vote for it because he beat me to it. I'm going to make a motion that he goes through Sheriff White, he's got the codes, just like they enforce every day, and we get this thing done tonight, but we'll go ahead and vote on this first.
So, Anton, restate your motion, please.
So, we're going to make a final decision. A final decision at our next meeting. We're going to get the key stakeholders together to wrap up and finalize a comprehensive proposal of what needs to be done, who's going to do what, how it's going to be paid for, and then we're going to take action in June.
I second.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick, all those in favor? One, two, three, all those opposed? By June. By June, so? Yes, and we will have a decision, because I do agree with everyone, and I understand everyone's frustration, because I want it just, I want to, I want to move forward with this as much as everybody else does. I just want to do it in the right direction, with the right, this, this is important, I mean, this is very important. So, um, it's not taken lightly, and it's not going to, it will be moved forward in June, I guarantee it. Sheila.
Do we have a dollar amount total? Because if you come back to your June meeting and you decide it's this, then you're going to have to go to your July for a public hearing. You're, you're putting it off until it's really almost off.
So, I'll go ahead and make a motion, we proceed and advertise it, up to probably fifty thousand would be enough then, correct? For the balance of this year.
Well, I guess that, that depends on if you go with a law enforcement officer or just the code enforcement person. So, you...
Fifty thousand would get us... If we're talking half a year.
But we're talking about a part-time person, you're talking about a full-time person. There's two different...
I'm not talking about any full-time, I never said that.
So, Sheriff White, if we build a law enforcement avenue, who determines where they work and in what day they work for them? I mean, there's a lot of issues that would be back.
Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think he needs, with his experience, that he can't manage it, I mean, with...
Well, we're just sitting here having a conversation about it, it's something that, that's a bit of an issue.
What's the issue?
If, if, if you guys are doing the proposal, your proposal, and you're going to, and it's going to be a law enforcement officer, then in that proposal, there needs to be how many hours they're working with them and how many hours they're working with me. How many, how many hours they do in code enforcement, and how many hours they do in law enforcement. So that's something that's going to have to be decided.
You know, I, I'll tell you, just to dive deeper, one of the reasons why I'm for the law enforcement route is, you've stood here in, in, over the last couple of months that we've done this and said, you know, it doesn't mean that we're going to do this to a person or that to a person, you know? But the books, the, the code that was approved, it does say, can do this, this, and this. You said, well, that doesn't mean that we're going to put somebody out of their house, but it does say that, you know, there's this step-by-step process.
And John just said that same thing, he's been here for thirty-five years, he's never thought anybody would do a real plan.
Right, but what I'm saying is, in this county, if you go and pick and choose, you know, if people say, well, Owen County, it's all about your name, or it's this, that, and the other, you can't just pick and choose. You've got to be able to evenly enforce the law. And this is a law, whether you like it or not, an ordinance is the law.
It is.
So, the bottom line is, when you say, well, this guy's got stuff in his yard, but it's not that bad, you know? I, I'll be honest with you, I, when you said that, well, we're not going to go this deep with it, we're just going to worry about the severe stuff, but the law is on the books to make this right. So my thing is, I'd rather have a law enforcement officer who we pay every day to go out there and make the decisions evenly and fairly, than us just saying, well, this guy does or this guy doesn't. Because I'm telling you, that, that's what's worrying me about this whole thing, is how do we do it fairly if you're not going to use the full enforcement of the code?
So how do other counties do that when they're not using law enforcement? I don't understand why we're any different county than anybody else.
I'm, I'm not sure that they do.
They don't, we, we looked into it, I think there was one county out of everything that we looked up. Uh, there was eighty-four different counties, I think RC even looked up some of those.
Okay, then let me ask you this.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
If, if a person has, based on the code that we have in place right now, if a person has an engine sitting in their yard, does that make them abiding by the code or not abide by it?
Depends on if it's leaking oil, antifreeze, just like that gentleman right there says, contaminating soil. That's something the code enforcement would go out and look at, that person may be trying to put that engine back in something, we're going to take that away from you, but if it's contaminating the soil, it causes problems, and this.
So that would, so, so based on what you said, that would be something that...
If it was leaking oil and antifreeze, it could be something, if it's not, it wouldn't be... If it's not, it would be nothing.
Who, who enforces what?
But you said it could be now.
It depends on the contamination of the soil.
But you see, you see what I'm saying? It, it, it depends on the contamination level. So, a little bit is, is, a little bit is able to be fined for.
And who enforces-
The soil, that, that's an issue.
I, I- So, Andy, you need to get order.
Okay.
So-
Where's Mike?
His office?
No, no, the judge is one that comes up to the fine. You need the officer.
So, is he, are you gonna make a motion to make the decision? Law enforcement versus-
Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead and do it. My motion is, is we'll use the same amount of money from the law enforcement person. So, the remedy is, we get a code officer tonight and to appropriate fifty thousand dollars for a law enforcement code, code officer, and it falls underneath Sheriff White.
Motion's on the floor, zero second. I'll second it for discussion. Marcy.
Just a quick question, if we switch from code enforcer to a law enforcement officer, then won't most of the pay that is used for that individual come from the taxpayer when Suzanne is providing a solution that doesn't need tax funding at all?
When this was, when this was first presented, it was going to be one that was shared between you, correct? And you were still going to bring, I mean, put up the fifty thousand?
We were offering fifty thousand to try to get somebody for two years. That was code enforcement. It was brought up to include a law enforcement officer, but when it went from the whole fifty thousand being used for one year, plus an additional twenty-nine thousand of taxpayer dollars, which didn't also include a car, uniform, and stuff like that.
Retirement.
Retirement, it doesn't include all of that. So, you're, you're taking the entire fifty thousand dollars, and then you have nothing left for the next year. That was the concern, is that once the fifty thousand is expensed, then there's no more money. And then you, then it will be fully on the burden of the taxpayers to pay for the person. So, that was the biggest concern for me, is that right now it would be self-funded for a period of time, as he said, a year and a half, out of nothing but storage fund money. That money's setting in a fund. I mean, you have to leave so much, because you got deposits and stuff like that, that you have to pay back to people. So, you can't deplete the fund while you're, you're still renting the storage unit. So, you have to keep a curtain, so many thousands of dollars in the fund to make sure that you can pay if somebody leaves. You know, pay them back their deposit, if they still have a deposit. I'm not saying that they all have deposits, some of them have used their deposits. But that's, that's the concern, is that you're going from fifty thousand, just gonna deplete that possibly by the end of the year.
Well, there's a plan in place right now, based on the last vote, so I'll go ahead and call for the vote, and we'll get this done and move on.
So, restate your, your motion, please.
Get a second.
Yeah, I seconded it, I seconded it just for, but restate your motion, please, for, for clarity.
Yes, my motion would be, so, are we saying that the fifty thousand isn't available to a law enforcement officer?
No, I'm not saying that. I'm saying that-
Go ahead and use, yeah, yeah, it'll burn quicker, there's no doubt. So, fifty thousand dollars, and we appoint or create the position under a law enforcement chain of command for this role.
So, as it stands right now before this vote, from Anton's last one, that we were going to-
We still need to finalize the final details and have a package to vote on in June. That part doesn't change. What Andy is proposing is that we riddle that down into making it a law enforcement solution versus a code officer solution. That's, that's his motion.
Yep, that's mine, mine along.
I just have one question on that. Where would the funding come from? I mean, besides the fifty thousand, that would just cover the year, right?
Yes. It'd be the next six months.
It'd be one?
It'd be the next six months, and if there's more, that we would have to have a discussion on it. I don't know the entire package they're talking about over there, as far as, I heard some things, as far as vehicle.
So, you want the first six must fully be funded by her department for a decade, is that what I'm understanding here?
Yeah, and then from there, we would, we would have to have another funding source.
Is that full-time?
That's the right thing.
Code enforcement, or is it part-time code and part-time?
Gary, listen, commissioner meetings, I don't know that what you're doing is the right thing to do, always, okay? So-
I'm just concerned about, she's self-funded, she gets no tax base whatsoever. For whatever reason, you guys took her out of general fund. In reality, she should be, and everything that she brings in, she'd go back in on general fund. That's neither here nor there. Now, she's funding another department's employee. I don't think we have that, other than grants and cost of labor.
Because I'm glad you nailed that down. Because are, are we wanting a jail enforcement officer, or is this about something else?
It's about nothing else but getting these people satisfied.
You want, you, right, and they want an enforcement officer.
They want a code enforcement officer that can write tickets so people clean up their property.
Yeah, so, why, why, this is a means to an end.
We don't need these people sitting up here beating around the bush, talking about what we do or don't want to do. Just do your job. You get paid by our tax money, correct? So, do your guys' job. We're the people, you're our employees.
So, you're gonna get-
Get an officer, put him out.
One more question, Marcy.
Ten thousand dollars for a new will. If they can't get it taken care of, the Owen County lawyer already said that I can sue Owen County to make them replace my will. That's ten thousand dollars. Give her her fifty for help code enforcement.
County Attorney John.
There I, is, is-
I, I, if I was to get anything, I wasn't there, I couldn't hear my question.
One more.
Polly, it's just a suggestion. Deborah Luzier is already working on the ordinances, and we have been. She's the consulting agent who's been working on ordinances for the last six months. Just as a suggestion, it sounds to me like what Anton and the council needs is just really clear proposals. One could be a code enforcement, one could be a law enforcement option for you to logically look at and determine which would be the best solution. You obviously want a solution, you just need to know what the best solution would be. Would it be possible for the county council to appropriate just some small funding out of the storage unit funding to pay Debbie, who is an expert in this field, who is a third party, to come up with two really great proposals to present, to make a decision upon? Just a suggestion.
So, would that take the place of this ordinance that, I mean, if we had-
No, she would just give you a proposal, what's Anton's wanting, a proposal, the two different-
All the way to on.
We've been almost an hour and a half.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is crazy.
And I, I feel like, I mean, if I had my brothers, I'd just go back to the first way and give it past. I'm so confused right now. I think that what Marcy is saying is, they're gonna give us the law enforcement side and the code enforcement side. And how much is that gonna cost? We already know that the other counties around us, I believe that if you tell me that, I believe you, that they do code enforcement. I don't know why spend more money. But I don't know how much it would be. You said small.
Yeah, you don't, so.
Andy, call for a vote.
Yes. Okay, so, all in, all in favor of the code enforcement being under the sheriff? All those opposed? Right now, I just, okay.
All right, so, regular code enforcement, we ruled law enforcement out of this. So, now we have the dollars, I'm gonna make a motion that we're gonna advertise up to fifty thousand, that should be more than enough for us to consider at our June meeting to coincide with the final proposal that needs to be put together.
All set.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions?
And that is out of the storage unit fund. What's the number?
Four, zero, fifteen.
Forty, fifteen, okay.
I have a question, who's going to do the final proposal? Suzanne, or are you having a-
It's gonna be Suzanne and the commissioners, this is coming from them, and we need to have something. And I'll help with the, some of the numbers too, but there needs to be a actual button pusher to get this finalized, so.
You and Susan need to work on that between now and June, that way we can have it all finalized and done.
I'd be happy to help.
There's no sense in discussing that, that can be.
It has to be next Wednesday, because there's a holiday weekend in there in order to have a public hearing at the jail.
And I'm off the week, the first week in June. Actually, I'm off this Friday, all the way.
Well, the motion is for up to fifty thousand, that should be more than enough for the proposal.
Okay.
So, yeah.
And who was the second on that? So, all those in favor? Motion carrying.
Thank you, Suzanne. Thank you, Commissioner Burton.
Before we close that out, can I ask you a quick question? I, I mentioned the camper the man has sitting on the property. That is currently violating an Indiana state code. So, who do I turn to, who do we turn to as, to, to enforce that? Because that needs to be gone.
The problem is it's under nine thirteen two more. It does show it as a penalty. It does, it does show it as violation, but it doesn't have to affect the impact. So, I'm gonna get across here and see if I can find the penalties attached to it, if the state established one. The state did establish one, it doesn't have TP.
So, there's not even any way you can force him to move it from my point?
I can, I can check the prospect and see if we have, if there is a penalty to the violation, I have it on. But I don't know if there's never any deal with the city.
I will just say, I'm one of the committee to legalize coal city. There's two people, I'm one of those, if anybody else is interested.
All right.
We've done some buildings, we're good.
Onto the jail project meeting review. We've discussed it a little bit. I, I'll just want to add that too, that I have gotten, gotten hold of the commissioners of Monroe County. I, I'm waiting to hear back from them, so we can meet with them about regional jail, just to discuss that, just so we can see if that's viable option.
I can give you two more quick updates. I have asked Brett if he's ready to go ahead and proceed with the appraisals with the commissioner. So, we can get that done. Trying to work on a dollar-for-dollar appraisal value, so there's no money changing either of these four. We'll work that out. The next thing is, I've been informed by Monroe County that they are looking at a new jail site. If everybody's familiar with Cryotville on Forty-six bypassing Melville, Wilmington, Hearthstone Healthcare, Wilmington Comless Rehabilitation Hospital. There's a dead-end area right across from that on Curry Pike. That is the new proposed jail site from Monroe County. That's all I have. But we are gonna go ahead and proceed with the appraisals of these two properties.
Right.
I also have Dusty, and I checked with him today, he's not got it finalized, but I want to know the assessed va, excuse me, the property value that's going to be assessed on that property that we are no longer, or currently don't receive. Doesn't matter if it's five thousand, ten thousand, whatever it is. But I think the public needs to know this is money we're trading, property for property, that we're getting in return of X amount of dollars, plus a viable building site.
Sounds good.
That's all I have.
So, also on the jail, on the funding side and the USDA stuff, Polly, are you gonna then engage, because we need that ball rolling as well? If there's another guidelines needed.
I think we were, we were waiting to see if we were, I mean, where the property was gonna be because of the environmental study and all of that, that has to go along with that.
Just want to make sure we don't drop the ball on that part of it. Because there's a, a long list of things that are needed for that.
And it takes a while, so the sooner we can get this hammered out, the better.
Exactly. I, I did come across, through the National Institute of Corrections, there's a three-day training that is for council commissioners, sheriffs, to learn what it takes to transition from an old jail to a new jail.
Oh, that's great.
They provided free charts, federal government comes in and tells you basically all these things you need to prepare for, what you need to consider, and it's free. So, it costs the same thing, but it needs self-educate us, so that we do it right once and not have to do it again later.
That sounds excellent.
Our whole committee, they probably attend that.
Yes, they probably, we, we, it's training, I don't know, it's a little three-day long, so we can do that as administrative function.
That's it, that's it.
In person, they, they bring someone here?
They come here, they bring all the, all the lesson material. I, I have all the course objectives and everything, but it at least educates us on what we need to do, so that we're not making mistakes along the way.
That would be great.
That would be great, yeah.
And also, last comment about the jail. I talked to Chris Saylor last Thursday, and he's almost positive that he's gonna make this twenty-five million, fit everything out the door. He also said that he would be able to get an EMA office and storage facility, as well as a coroner's office and place for the cooler attached to the outside and south. So, we're waiting, we're working on, the architect's back working on those plans now, and so, and I think it's waiting to buy them sometime this future, to execute it. So, those things are in progression, and if we can get all those facilities like we need in that, that one location, say, if that's there, no. So, it's all going forward.
Okay, great. Are we ready to move on to economic development request letter of support?
So, nothing new, this is old business. I was here last time asking for support from letter of economic development district. I'll be quick, I mean, I guess we've already been here so long, but we've got a lot to go. You know, I'm driving down, I live on Shepherd Patrick. Sometimes I drive down Shepherd Patrick, go down Texas Pike, and had somebody in the car with me the other day, and we just was talking about my neighbors. And I was talking about my neighbors clear down on Texas Pike, and they were like, why is that your neighbor? They don't even live next door to you. It's just because everybody on the road is my neighbor, and we keep an eye out on one another. That's literally what we're talking about with an economic development district. We're talking about our neighbors, we're talking about Monroe County, we're talking about Brown County. The whole point of the district is to try and just see how we can work together as neighbors, which we are already doing. Kyle was here, but he had to leave. Kyle has a regional trails group, he works with people from the town of Ellisville and Monroe County. They meet over here at McCormick Street, and they're all working together to figure out how to put a trail through all three counties and figuring out funding solutions. That's like an economic development district on a very micro level. This is all about working with Brown and Monroe and Owen, which we already do, okay? And figuring out how to do that better. Now, I know that there were some concerns about where does that funding look like? Does Monroe County get more money than Owen County? Is there gonna be equal representation? I had asked all of you, or suggested to you, to reach out to individuals for questions, and so this evening I brought with me Greg Jones. Greg is here to answer any questions that you might have. That way you're not getting your answers from me, you're getting it from someone who already has an economic development district. He's with the Southern Indiana Development Commission.
So, right, I'm Greg Jones, Southern Indiana Development Commission. We're part of an organization that's a regional planning commission that's also designated by the Economic Development Administration as an economic development district. Some of the benefits of being an economic development district is, is, one, it forces us to have equal representation across our five-county area. So, each of our counties has seven members on their board, and they appoint them. So, the commissioner will appoint one, county council will appoint one, and then the largest municipalities will appoint from there. If they don't, if there's not enough municipalities to make that appointment, then it's either the commissioners or the council will make up those other appointments. But we have representation, and we have five counties that all work together. My board, large board, thirty-six members, they all come together, they hear about what's going on in the region, and then we work on projects together in order to, to move the whole region forward. Regionalism is, is hard. Getting people to work together and getting those entities to have the best interests of their neighbors at heart, it takes time, it takes trust. I often talk about, the commodity I sell with my organization is not the staff that I have, the knowledge that we have, the ability, capabilities of our staff, it's trust. If you don't trust us to be able to work together and pull the best ideas together, then we don't get anything done. And, and really, what I- best ideas together, then we don't get anything done. And really, what I've seen over my lifetime of working in this, over 23 years for SIDC, is that when we're working together, we're all pulling in the same direction. We're getting bigger things done. In point, the Westgate Crane Authority, that's a three-county area that's all working together, sharing revenue. How scary is that? That we're sharing revenue in order to create something larger for the benefit of the entire region. And we were there at the very beginning. We were there to talk to the commissioners about the very first project was cleaning up a brownfield property in order to start the technology part that has now, we've got a microelectronics plant coming with 550 jobs in the next year. So, it's grown. It takes time. It takes dedicated staff to be able to help pull those parties together and be able to talk through the different issues. And equal representation is absolutely important. And, you know, that's the nice thing about setting up as an economic development district is that there is that equal representation. There isn't one group that gets more attention than the other group. I would invite you all to, I've got a board meeting this Wednesday at lunch. We'll feed you. If you want to hear and come talk to any of my board members about how they feel about SIDC and the representation they get from one county to the next. Everyone feels like we're there for them. Part of, that feeling is part of being economic development district is we do a comprehensive economic development strategy. We do this every five years to do a full one. But every year we update it with different projects that get brought up as, you know, pet projects that people want to see get done. So, it keeps the documents fresh. It's living. And people, you know, get input from the community and also from the elected officials on what's, what our organization is working on. And, you know, that's led us in a lot of different directions. It's cleaning up lighted properties. That's getting brownfield grants. That's doing transit traffic counts. That's not something I ever thought I'd be doing. But we do those counts so that people know how to spend their taxpayer dollars in a better manner. If they've got one road that has 500 counts on it, one road that has 100 counts, this one's going to wear out faster. Make better decisions out of it. And that's really what we're trying to do as an economic development district is help you make better decisions and then partner in with the people that can maybe do something grander for the region.
And Greg, could you please address the concern that Monroe County, because there's a larger population, would receive more funding than Owen or Brown?
So, it's project-specific. You know, it really comes down to the different project. They wouldn't have any competitive advantage over Owen County. Now, like I say, it's project-specific. And so, if they have projects that are outlined and they have a budget that can cover those projects in order to do the local match on those, well, then that project's going to get pushed forward. If you're not putting money towards any of the projects that are going to help, you know, bring up the economic development of the county, then they will absolutely get more projects done than you guys will. But this gives you an option. It gives you a plate, a seat at the table in order to try and get some of this economic development fund. So, I had EDA, they were just down last week, last Wednesday, and they came to me and they said, Greg, we've got coal dollars that we can't spend. And so essentially, there's money from the federal government that's been given to EDA for communities that have been affected by coal, the downturn in the coal industries. And they're like, we need someone to spend it. Can we pull together projects in your, in your region in order to do that? I'm able to pull luckily, because I've been working with all our communities. I'm able to pull two different projects out of there, which is going to be around $3.5 million in grant funding coming down from EDA. So, it's just, we do a lot. Like I say, we really just go into every, every one of the communities, ask them what their needs are, and then we try and help them and assist them in whatever way we can. We've been generous with our time. We've come to Owen County in the past and have worked in Owen County on quite a few projects. I mean, we've done a lot with the water and sewer in Spencer. We've worked on the health center in Spencer. We've done owner-occupied rehabilitation for homes. We've helped with the comp plan. We've helped on the McCormick Street, doing labor standards there. And then also in the courthouse we're in right now, we've helped do the ADA project that was in there. So, it's, we understand Owen County needs an economic development district. That's why we've donated a lot of our time to come up into Owen County and assist you when, when available. But it's, you know, quite honestly, it's one of those things where, you know, you, I think you've grown and matured enough to the point where if you can formulate this with Monroe County and with Brown County, then, you know, I think there's a larger share of projects that you guys could be doing and working together on.
Any questions?
What county are you from?
So, I grew up in Linton, so in Green County, but I live in Washington now. But my five counties that I represent, Knox County, Davis County, Green County, Martin County, and Lawrence County. That's my area. We've been, that's been our region for the last 50 years. So, we just celebrated our 50-year anniversary on that. The return on investment that my counties have in the region is for every dollar they put into SIDC, they're getting around $400 back. That's a pretty good return on investment from federal grants, state grants, or whatever else that we're doing. Now, we've had a lot of time to mature. We've been around 50 years. We've got a lot of services that have developed over that 50 years. So, no organization could come up and start and try and match what we do. But, you know, it's, you've got to start somewhere. And it's a, it's a really great, it's really great being part of a region. I really believe in regionalism. I know that sometimes it's a good term or a bad term, but, you know, it is one of these instances where, where when you get people working together, you can do larger things, so.
Any other questions from the council?
Monroe and Monroe, are they, are they?
They are. They have been working on this as long as I've been coming to get letters of support. I go before the joint county commissioners and county council of Brown County next Tuesday. And then I have a meeting with the Monroe County Council the next month. So, they are working on this as well.
Yeah, I have, I have talked to some people from different areas, not, I was, I knew in the dark about it before. And I talked to a smaller county that's in with two other ones, but one of them is a big county, just like Monroe County compared to. And he says, their worst problem that he has is they look for the bigger county, and you can tell me this, they look for the bigger county to do more improvements than they do the lower counties because they don't think it helps as many people. And he-
Yeah, so, I mean, there's, it gets a lot into the funding stream of how the state of Indiana allocates their funding and also how federal dollars are allocated. You know, you look at eligibility. You look at a level of distress that comes with a lot of these federal programs. And so, like, when you're looking at the larger communities, they have entitlement funds that are directly come to them. They don't compete for those entitlement funds. Those go directly to them. In the rural areas, you have to compete for those entitlement funds. It just means you've got to roll up your sleeves and work a little harder to get those funds back into your area. But, you know, we've been very, I mean, I read off a pretty good list. There's probably $4 million worth of projects there that I read off that, you know, we've been able to compete for in Owen County. You have a certain level of distress, like it or not, you know, that makes you competitive in some of these federal programs. And so, you know, parts of Monroe County wouldn't have that same level of distress, right? So, that they wouldn't be as eligible as you would be for some of those projects. Now, do they have a larger budget?
Right.
They do. And so, they have more local match that they can throw at certain projects. But they may not even qualify because they may not meet that distress level.
Believe it or not, the fact that Owen County is an economically distressed county is in our favor because that means that we would be eligible for projects that Monroe County would not.
You just said, Marcy, what was the amount that you invest so much and you get so much?
So-
Seventeen, seventy?
So, in order to apply to become a economic development district, you have to create a sets plan, which is, you know, the regional plan. And the EDA will give 50% of that. So, I mean, it's up in the air. I mean, you know, top, it'd be like 100,000. If it was 100,000, the EDA would pay for 50 of that. And then the other 50 would have to come from the three current counties that are in the economic development district. So, but if it was an 80,000 plan, then, you know, it just depends on how much the plan's going to cost.
But to be fair, and if that's, is that, I guess, is cost sharing, I assume that that's a common practice with this.
Give me in reference to cost sharing.
Well, so, for example, she just said that 50%
Right.
Comes, you know, so.
So, yeah.
And then before that, it was stated, well, you know, basically, smaller, less economic areas aren't discriminated against. But in a way, when you've got to come up with monies to proceed with things, it's not an even playing field. When you compare the, Monroe County's an economic powerhouse compared to Owen County.
Just the population alone, right?
Yep, right.
You know, what you're, you're all down.
But that really doesn't change it from this moment right now, today, where Owen County's at. Owen County still would have to put fine money to go towards any project. And we wouldn't be able to have access to EDA funds to match that. Or we can't. We actually cannot do that right now.
I have a question. Because I've heard that it's very, once you are in an EDD, it is very hard to get, I mean, to break that and get out of it. Is that correct?
So, I guess I've never had to deal with, with anyone wanting to leave our organization because they felt the benefit of what we've done. And that's over a 50-year track record. You know, in, in certain lean times of different county governments, they've always been willing to put money into SIDC because we deliver. Getting out of it, I mean, you can get out of anything. If there's contracts that you kind of put together, you would be able to get out of it. I, you know, I would think though, if you give it the amount of time it would take to kind of get the feet wet and get growing on this, you'll see the benefit for an economic development district.
And those 90 counties-
From what SIDC has done.
My concern is because even though we are neighboring Monroe County, we are very, very different. And I've had a lot of people come to me with concern about that. And, and that's a concern of mine as well. We have a lot of different goals. We have a lot, I mean, it's, it's, we may be neighbors, but we're, we're very, very different from each other.
So, that's, that's a good point. So, this economic development district would not talk about every single story, okay? This, this only focuses on the stories that Monroe, Owen, and Brown have together. And what are those stories? So, like, the equal representation of those committee members, that would be part of having that sets plan is determine what stories do we have where we match up. We're not going to be going, I mean, Monroe works with Crane. That's not really part of our story. I mean, we have people that work there, but that's not really part of our story. So, that wouldn't be part of the focus. That, that sets plan really determines what are those things that tie us together that we want to focus on to build up.
Yeah. The other thing, like, I think Marcy kind of touched on was that at the moment, we're at kind of ground zero anyway. I mean, where there's nothing to lose by opening up a door and having some options if they present themselves, if the finances make sense, if the players work together.
Lots of ifs.
A lot of ifs, right? We are, we have to go through Monroe County to access I-69. There's a huge transportation corridor that this kind of partnership would allow us to tackle and work together with key stakeholders on, just as one example. We also have infrastructure concerns, thinking of things like Elletsville's infrastructure versus Spencer's and the meeting of where those end up. And how do you manage that? And what kind of territories do you have? And, and how does that piece together? Housing is another component to that. So, this particular request is only to express openness to the idea, the concept of doing this. It's not obligating us to proceed formally. We don't have to proceed forward from there if it doesn't work out. It doesn't require us to cough up any money right now or anything that's concrete on that. So, in my opinion, I think we should at least sign the letter of interest. And then we'll have a new update and we'll know more as things progress. So, I'm going to make a motion that we proceed in authorizing the president to sign off on the letter.
I'll say.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Amy. Are there any questions? All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed?
May I ask why?
No one in my district wants anything to do with Monroe County. And I understand that. This is the thing, that they don't want to be like Monroe County. They don't want to be adored with Monroe County. They don't want anything that Monroe County has to offer. That's plain and simple. That's it. There's nothing else that I can say about it. That's what the people that put me in this seat would say to me if I went to the restaurant where I go eat breakfast almost every day, would say to me, why did you go down there? We don't want anything to do with Monroe County.
So, they don't get gas, or go to Sam's Club, or go to the mall, or go to the Crow House.
And they hate it. They hate the fact that they have to do it. That's why, on my part. I think, for me, it's trying to preserve, you know, there's a lot of folks that want to be like Bloomington and, and Monroe County in a lot of ways. And I think we have our own, we're one county away, but we've got our own culture here. And when, when I see the protests that happened over the last two weeks, it makes me not want to align. I know that's just a faction, but it's not going on here. And I don't want, I don't want to align with, with that topic.
I certainly don't want Owen County to be like Monroe County. But I also don't see the harm in a letter. Get some more information. I mean, it's not going to happen just because we do this letter. Although, you know, we, we want progress. We don't want to, we don't want to be Monroe County, Bloomington, I guess we should say. But we also want to be able to fund some things that we need to make Owen County better, a place of pride.
If I may just add one little thing, and it's not going to sway anyone's mind on anything, but it's just nice to say. My organization, it's actually written into my contract that I cannot be a political entity. So, I cannot run for any office. I cannot, you know, even put a sign out in my yard that says, hey, vote for Joe Schmo to be the, you know, the coroner, whatever. We really, if I walk into any room in my county, people don't know whether I'm a Republican or Democrat or an independent. They don't care because they know that I'm going to give them the best, you know, answer dependent on political party on that. And sometimes you need someone that's outside of a political agenda to help you cut through some of the BS that happens in the world today, that carries you through. So, I'm just saying that-
Don't confuse culture with politics, though. I do feel like, you know, there are, that demonstration, there is a political thing. But I'm just, what I'm saying is there's, there's, you don't see.
You know, I have to explain to someone. I get you, yeah. I understand that, yeah. I want, just waiting to.
Yeah. And, and just to make one more point, from a technical standpoint, that was a complete mess. Several years ago, when I-69 was being discussed as coming through southwestern Indiana, folks in Bloomington did not want it, period. And rather than have a seat at the table where they actually had a voice in the planning and the development and all the connection points, they waited until it was too late and wound up being a complete mess because they didn't have that seat at the table from day one. So, I guess what I'm going to say is, is that whether we like it or not, things are happening. Things are changing. It may be faster. It may be slower. But there's a lot of technical things that do affect Owen County immensely that we're going to end up paying a higher price for later on if we're not, if we don't have a voice, if we don't have a seat at the table. And that's why I think it's important that we, at some point, now maybe it- And that's why I think it's important that we, at some point, now maybe it may take another year to warm up to it, but at some point, I hope that we consider having that seat at the table and having a voice and being able to work together as a region on those issues. But I totally respect, I understand the votes. I understand the votes.
It's not about Owen County becoming Monroe County.
It's a, it's a great example. Because mid-state court, that's coming through my region. Right, I can imagine.
If it was any other county like Monroe County, we'd probably all sign on.
Well, thank you for coming. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to new business. Hamilton Center.
Been a while since we've seen each other.
Hey, folks.
How are you?
I promised to keep this brief. I just have information.
We kept it really brief tonight, too, so.
You all did a marathon tonight. I do want to say, uh, your mother is in my prayers. I'm sorry.
Well, thank you. Thank you.
And Sheila, taking the minutes, I feel for you. All right. So, um, the state of Indiana is partnering with DMHA, which is the Department of Mental Health and Addictions, to try to bring a CCBH, to have Indiana be a CCBHC state. What that means, and Anton, you know a little bit about this because you and I spoke about this, oh, a few months back. Um, it's, it's a certified community behavioral health clinic. What that would do is that would say to anyone who walks through the door of the CCBHC site is no matter how severe your mental health is, no matter how severe your substance abuse is, no matter who you are, where you're from, socioeconomic background, pay or not pay, you will be treated. How they would do that is DMHA has applied for this. Um, and if the funding, you know, the funding for Medicaid comes from the feds, goes to the state, and the state disseminates how they choose. CCBHCs are funded through SAMSA and Medicaid. So, the funding would come through the feds, so there's more money to disseminate to the CCBHC state. Now, we don't know yet, um, state of Indiana hasn't been approved yet. We won't know that until June or July. If we're approved this year, then we would begin in January of twenty twenty-five. Governor Holcomb has already said, if we don't get approved this, this year, and, and I feel like we got a good shot from the people I talked to, if we don't get approved now, it will happen in twenty twenty-seven. So, either way, this way of doing mental health and substance abuse treatment, um, a comprehensive range of services for anyone who wants to come through the door is coming, and that's a beautiful thing. What it means is, uh, I'm just going to hit the talking points and try to, try to be done because, uh, you've been through, you've been through some stuff tonight. So, it's responding through mobile crisis to behavioral health and addiction emergencies in the community. So, that means currently, um, there is a mobile crisis unit through, uh, Centerstone. Hamilton Center will have a mobile crisis unit based on Sullivan that will travel a forty-five mile range, which does hit Owen County. Owen County is lucky. We would have two in the state, in this county. So, that means if there's a crisis, we would go to where you are or to where anyone is to meet the need. The second thing is it would enhance twenty-four seven, three sixty-five crisis stabilization services through west central Indiana. Crisis stabilization is different than inpatient unit. An inpatient unit goes from anywhere from five to seven days, sometimes ten days, depending on the severity of the mental health disorder or the mental health crisis or substance abuse crisis. The crisis stabilization, sometimes they don't need that much. Sometimes they don't need five to seven days. Sometimes they need to be in there for twenty-three hours or less just to get stabilized. That's what, that's what, um, the crisis stabilization service is. Hamilton Center's working on that currently. We don't have that up and running yet, but we are working on that. So, if you're admitted, maybe ten o'clock on a Friday night, you're assessed about every two to three hours to see, how are we doing? Um, obviously, they're not going to let somebody out at two in the morning. Um, how are we doing? Maybe you can leave at, um, six the next morning. Maybe you need to stay till nine. Or maybe you need to be reassessed and go to an inpatient unit, depending on how things shake in the stabilization. So, that's a wonderful thing coming this way. The also, it's integrating the National Suicide Prevention Lifeline. You've all heard of nine eight eight, I'm sure? So, it's integrating with nine eight eight. So, anybody, anywhere can call nine eight eight. Nine eight eight does an assessment, and then they go to, they triage to who has the closest mental health service to that person. And they reach out to their mobile crisis unit. And then lastly, it's coordinating primary healthcare needs. So, Hamilton Center is going to start screening for also primary healthcare needs, not just mental health and substance abuse, to try to get a comprehensive service under one roof. So, what does that mean for Owen County and the state of Indiana? A lot of good things. It means that reducing non-emergent, non-emergent emergency department visits. The ER is not the place to go if you're having a mental health crisis. It just isn't. So, it will reduce that because you've got the mobile crisis unit going out to them. Diverting individuals from incarceration to treatment. Um, I've been working closely with the J-Rac team here in Owen County. And ironically, this is coming at the same time, and I don't know if someone had the foresight for that or somebody, or it's just, you know, the stars aligning. So, um, you know, the goal is to divert someone who has a serious mental health crisis at the moment. You don't put them behind bars. You put them in, maybe, maybe you put them in the crisis stabilization unit. So, the crisis center, the crisis unit comes, they assess the situation, and they divert them to where they really need to be as opposed to in an emergency room or jail. Um, and then it's increasing Medicaid, this medication assisted treatment. What that is, is if you have a substance abuse issue and you can't just go full turkey, you can't white knuckle it. That's, that's an old saying that back when I was a kid, people would try to white knuckle. You can't. Sometimes you need Medicaid and assisted, uh, assisted treatment. Um, so, we would also provide that. And then lastly, um, investing in the healthcare workforce in our communities. So, Hamilton Center is currently in eleven counties. What we would do is we'd hire a hundred and fifty new workers throughout all of our sites uh, to make sure we can meet the needs of all the people in the communities. And we've also partnered with, and hoping will expand this, but we've partnered with St. Mary's. If somebody at Hamilton Center wants to further their education, maybe they're a care manager with a bachelor degree, and they want to be a therapist to get a master's, we've partnered with St. Mary's to help reduce the cost of their education so they can do that. Or maybe they don't have a bachelor's yet and they want to get one. Maybe they want to go on to be a, um, you know, a PhD and, uh, do, be a psych nurse. So, we've partnered with St. Mary's, hopefully, we're going to expand that as well, so we can build from within. So, that's kind of a bird's eye view of what CCBHC is, and it is coming for sure. Lord willing, it will come this year, um, so we can start in twenty twenty-five. You know, because it's just going to benefit the state of Indiana. A lot of good things are going to come from this. So, that's all I have for you. I just wanted to share some really good news. The state of Indiana cares about the mental health and addiction issues, uh, and this is coming, but I don't know when. Any questions for me?
Thank you. I like the incarceration component, where you're avoiding incarceration.
Yeah.
Providing an alternative, because that saves us resources.
It does, and it puts people where they need to be.
Aside from the actual proper treatment.
Right.
It saves resources.
Absolutely. Yeah. And that's, like I said, J-Rac, I don't know if you've been to a J-Rac meeting lately, but that's exactly.
I'm not on it anymore, but I think Amy is now. Yeah.
She's there.
She's there. But I am familiar with that.
All right. Well, if you have any questions, um, most of you know where to reach me at Hamilton Center. Uh, feel free to reach out.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Chamber of Commerce.
So, on April eleventh, the abatement review committee met as per they do normally every year. And they went over the, um, abatement for Mater Mill as well as Owen Valley Winery. And I literally just need to read to you the resolution from the abatement review and their recommendation. So, now therefore be resolved by the Spencer Owen Economic Development Abatement Review Committee as follows. The abatement review committee has reviewed the annual CF one P P and CF one real property forms at the annual reporting period. The abatement review committee finds that Mater Mill has, has performed the necessary improvements upon the real estate and installed the manufacturing equipment pursuant to and exceeding the terms of the tax abatement. The abatement review committee finds that Mater Mill meets the wage requirements pursuant to exceeding the terms of the tax abatement. Even though the application has met and exceeded their capital investment and wages for tax abatement requirements, there remains non-compliance on the key component of employment. The committee maintains their recommendation from twenty twenty-three that the county council seek legal advice to amend the tax abatement with Mater Mill based on their continued non-compliance with their workforce obligation. It was determined that the review committee will no longer make recommendations for this abatement. The county council's twenty twenty-three approval of this abatement was made with compliance criteria that was no longer part of the original abatement application. The Spencer Owen Economic Development Abatement Review Committee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the property owner, the Owen County auditor, the Department of the Local Government Finance, duly resolved and adopted this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four, by the Spencer Owen Economic Development Abatement Review Committee, Owen County, Indiana, having been passed in a vote of three in favor, zero opposed, and one abstained. And the minutes to that meeting are attached to that resolution. I also need to read Owen Valley Winery, Steve. So, now therefore be resolved by the Spencer Owen Economic Development Abatement Review Committee as follows. The abatement review committee has thoroughly reviewed the Owen Valley Winery application for abatement. The abatement review committee affirmed their decision from the previous year that the Owen Valley Winery did not score high enough with the current scoring system to merit an abatement. The abatement review committee determined that the committee will no longer make recommendations for this abatement as they feel the county council's approval of this abatement was made with compliance criteria that is no longer part of the original application. Therefore, there is no scoring matrix to base an opinion on for compliance of this abatement. This was a unanimous decision by the review committee. The Spencer Owen Economic Development Abatement Review Committee is directed to provide a copy of this resolution to the property owner, the Owen County auditor, and the Department of Local Government Finance, duly resolved and adopted this eleventh day of April, twenty twenty-four, by the Spencer Owen Economic Development Corporation, Abatement Review Committee, and Owen County, Indiana.
So, Marcy, you're saying both of them have their evaluation?
I'm saying, um, Mater Mill did not meet employment compliance last year. And the recommendation from the review committee, after them not meeting their employment compliance, was that the county council would seek legal advice to maybe, um, what was the suggestion? I want to make sure I say it correctly. Uh, seek legal advice to amend the tax abatement with Mater Mill based on their continued non-compliance. So, there, they, basically, the recommendation was, why don't you look and see what your options are? Because they're not meeting this compliance, and chances are, they're probably not going to meet this compliance. So, their, um, job was to look at criteria, see if they meet the criteria. They're not meeting the criteria, so therefore, their recommendation was that Mater Mill, um, that you seek legal advice to see if you should change that or if you should make a decision. That was their recommendation.
And the winery did?
The winery did not last year, when the winery went before the abatement review committee, again, with the compliance criteria and the scoring, because there's a certain scoring mechanism to an abatement. An abatement has to require a certain amount of, um, investment within the community that has to ser, um, bring in so much money, that it needs to have a certain amount of employees, and, and their wages have to meet a certain requirement, all to have a positive impact upon the county. Uh, that their scoring did not meet or merit an abatement. However, the county council went ahead and gave an abatement so that when Owen Valley Winery came before the review committee this year, uh, basically, there's, there's no scoring matrix. So, the individuals on the abatement review committee were not going to say whether they were in compliance or not because this has to go before the Department of Local Government Finance. And they had suggested and recommended that they not even receive one. So, there's, there's no scoring matrix to base an opinion of compliance upon.
Thank you. I heard what you read, but then again.
I know, yeah. Well, I did because it's, yeah.
So, last year, the final action by the council was to proceed with the abatement on Mater Mill, primarily on a technicality because we ran out of time.
Right.
If you remember that.
I do.
There was a lot to that.
Mm-hmm.
Steve?
Yep.
Paulie? And at the end of the day, we determined also, I believe, we're in year five of five. Are we in the final year of the Mater Mill abatement? Because they were.
Pretty sure we are.
Just to confirm what year we're in, I thought we were running out of, is it longer than that?
Yes, they have a ten-year abatement.
Is it a ten-year, and we're in year five?
You are now in year six.
Six, okay. So.
We really need to.
So, it's going to have to be, uh, where does it stand? All or none? The deadline would be June, correct?
That is correct. And that's your decision. This is simply a recommendation from the abatement review committee.
If we not look at the scoring on that, it just did not make sense.
There needs to be an update.
Yeah, I think there needs to be an update with the scoring. And I think, I feel like, uh, scoring is brought, meant to bring in larger corporations and that employs a lot of different, a lot, right.
Exactly what you said the last time.
And, and I still feel strongly that, I feel like, the larger corporations, they don't, I mean, they don't need the tax abatements. It's the smaller, the smaller mom and pop, uh, businesses that we need to, that I would like to see encouraged and, um, and they're the ones that benefit the most with the tax abatements.
Well, I think an abatement is a mechanism, regardless of whether you're a large company or a smaller company, to, you know, increase the economic improvement of a community. I don't think it's necessarily geared towards one or the other. That's why there's a scoring criteria to meet that. However, again, last year, after the county council said that the scoring criteria was out of date, Economic Development did research that and made sure that we changed the entire abatement review application to meet state statute.
Then our question is, do we want to amend or deny? We have, say, I have a right to deny, and do we not?
Oh, yeah. The original motion made in, I believe, April, earlier in the process, was to go fifty percent, I think, was one of the proposals for.
For Mater Mill.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Marcy, do you have it in front of you? I, I, I realize that there may, are you still there?
I'm going to be.
Yep.
Thought you were hiding something. Um, the, uh, there's, I don't know what the exact threshold was, but is it safe to say that there has been compliance issues with the, I feel like memory serves me right, that there's been compliance issues on the Mater Mill for a while, but maybe they don't meet the threshold that what you were looking at is compliance issues? Because I feel like we've been discussing this for a long time.
Yeah. Well, this Mater Mill's, um, tax abatement was before I ever came on. And, um, it was from day one, they had.
The employment issue.
It was the employment issue. And they, I think the, the council, before I came on, we, I mean, they decided that, since COVID and everything, to kind of grant them a little bit of the leeway. So.
I make a motion that we slash both these regents by fifty percent for this next agreement cycle?
I, I would like to see one at a time. They're two different, vastly different, um, businesses. Um, and when we voted for the winery, it was not based on, on employment. I mean, it was based on the fact of how much they did for the, the community, drawing in people from outside of the county where they spent their, their money in this, you know, in our, our county. Um, so, I mean, I, I, and myself, I would like to see it two different.
One at a time.
Right.
Mater Mill, the next cycle, we cut it fifty percent on the rate since their evaluation. They haven't, you're right. I'm not, see, I don't think they've, they've met their, uh, I don't think they've met their obligation, have they ever?
Well, the, the, as the report indicates, it's the employment number.
That's correct.
The amount of employees that they are not compliant with for the sixth year or fifth year in a row, if you will. And again, the thought was earlier in those years, because of COVID, okay, we'll cut you some slack. However, and they're aware of it. I mean, they've, they've, that's, this drum has been beaten for two, three years already.
Already increased fifty percent more from where they were at the last time we spoke about this. So, from seven to eleven, I know that's not.
Yeah, I mean, the trend is better.
But the trend, but the number is not. But the number's not.
Yeah.
Did you want to amend your motion?
So.
I'm sorry.
Did you want to amend your motion to, to just Mater?
Yes, I, I, I thought, yeah, I whipped your original and made one motion, just Mater Mill, had a fifty percent reduction. add 50% reduction on the regent for the next cycle.
Motion's on the floor, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second by Steve?
Why the 50, I mean, I.
Well, I think we probably deny them all of it. I really believe that they're trying, 50%, if I was a business owner and I was having trouble meeting the obligation I had from the abatement, I would appreciate 50% of it all of it taken, but that's my thinking.
The main thing of it is, I think they, they had, they've put larger numbers on than they knew they could meet to begin with, and they haven't never met them, and not even close.
What are, do you have, and what are?
They initially said they were going to add 29 employees, and as of today, they have 11.
Yeah, so they benefited the past.
Yeah, six, well, five years.
Are you from Mater Mill?
I'm on the Mater.
Oh, okay.
So we set, I mean, we go through the scoring matrix you guys set aside for us. Different things make the score go up.
Right.
A big chunk in that is what it does for you with taxes from people based on employee. So when they don't meet that, it makes a huge, if you go back and look at the scoring matrix, they wouldn't even be eligible for it.
Right.
So it puts us in a rock and a hard spot. That's the only reason I'm here tonight, is because you guys are voting on things and pushing stuff through that puts other people in a rock and hard spot. Alls we have to look at is that piece of paper. They either need it, or they don't need it.
That's right.
And if they don't need it, we can't, we can't look at it on our feelings. I love what Mater Mills does with giving out wood and all this stuff.
Yeah, that's it.
But the thing of it is, is we gotta look at what they put on a piece of paper and submit it, and we score it, and then we gotta turn around, pass it on. And when we get done, and things are done totally out of the realm of that scoring matrix, and following what we have to go by, it takes it totally out of, we don't even know what we're voting on anymore, because there's no matrix to go by. And that's where the problem and lies at. If you keep going on and giving people money that they don't deserve, you turn around and put everybody in a rock and hard spot. So where's it stop? How do we figure out how the next company that comes in wants an abatement? We can't go by our feelings, we gotta go by something. Either scrap the scoring matrix and start over, so we have something to go by, or, you know, have something that we look at, because we can't do anything on feelings. I like voting against, but you have to look at the scoring matrix, say, do you deserve it, or they don't.
The process is there for a reason.
Okay, so basically, I think, if we throw this out here, the question is, we either vote on Nick's, unless Nick would consider withdrawing his motion, and then just doing a total Nick's of abatements, to where they did not receive any abatement anymore. And that's up to you, Nick.
I'd like to go ahead and choose who I'm going to say.
Okay, well, I'll call for both of them.
Was it, who seconded? The, okay, Steve.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. There's people.
I'm not trying to be upset, I'm just sitting here going, we got something, we have to follow. It's black and white for us, and if you guys do something outside of that, and we don't know what's going on, when we met with Owen Valley Winery, I'm thinking, why are we even meeting with them? Because they never met the matrix to get it in the first place.
I would like to see that.
It's really put us in a rock and hard spot.
I would like to see that reworked, myself. Those.
Can Andy call for it?
I did.
All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Okay.
So, I guess, my question is, I guess I feel and understand, based on his comment, based on the fact, here's what you're saying. You're saying that if you come to Owen County, you don't have to meet the criteria for an abatement.
Yeah.
So I would encourage everybody to apply.
Well, Andy, I liked that, but we've given four years or five years, and we didn't address the issue. So at least we're taking it down the chicken.
Yeah, we did.
Next year, we could wipe it out.
It's a soft.
Yeah, we addressed it.
Right.
I mean, we have a business owner, they are contributing, I mean, going from, you know, the normal schedule to zero.
How many of those employees are from Owen County?
Is a bit of a harsh cutoff. But 50%, and then next year, zero. I mean, really? It's base at our closing.
Well, I feel like a 10-year tax abatement is a long time.
And we're at six and seven.
I thought that's what we did last year.
It is a long time, especially if you don't meet it.
Yeah.
And for, if you have a metaphor, six.
Well, we did, but we had, we missed the cutoff.
So, so, so there you go. I mean, we've amped your frustration.
So where did these, I mean, this has been before my time, but where does this criteria come from? How was that, I mean, how was it drawn up? Is it from, where does the criteria, where does the matrix come from?
All the criteria, all the forms that I sent, they're all found online. It's all through the state, it's just a matter of giving them the right forms. So there was a resolution made for the abatement before I ever took this position, and so then again, from the county council's recommendation last year, that that needed to be looked at and made sure it meets that statute, that's exactly what we did.
So, I mean, your point system is state? Is it comes from the state?
Yep, anyone has those abatements.
Well, the main thing of it is, they put that up there to sound good, so it would, they could get the abatement and help them out to begin with. And I would have loved for that to happen, but it hasn't, and we've given plenty of chances, and it's just not there.
So what do you do on the, the, the stance of the winery there? See, that's, I mean.
Well, the winery, we give them a five-year sliding scale, 180, 60, 40, 20, anyway. That's how we set it up from the very beginning.
So it was a five-year, and it was, yeah.
It decreases. And it was because it was a very heavy, non-personnel investment, it was equipment, not people, per se. And that's not what's addressed in the current scoring.
So who comes up with the matrix?
We're all about.
It's just the state, it's like, there's a certain number that you give for this, and a certain number that you give for that, and it's based upon those CF1 forms.
Okay, but there's not anything to use for the winery, nothing against.
No, it's the exact same, same, same application that every other company uses.
So is that him, or are we done?
We have to make a decision.
The winery, do we need to make a decision on that? Or do we have to, if there's to be any change, if there's not to be any change?
You just need to meet your deadline. So, I mean, I'm literally, at this point, your secretary. I'm just recording what decision that you make. The decision you make will go to the Department of Local Government Finance, that you made this decision based upon this. However, the abatement review recommendation also goes to the DLGF, which shows that they were not, that, again, for, that they did not meet the criteria.
Well, I'll make a motion that we don't give them any abatement, because they didn't come through with their part.
On the winery?
Yeah, on the winery.
They have not.
But they did.
But they did.
They didn't meet it the first time.
But they did do what we wanted them.
I'll just be honest with you.
What's the difference?
After the last, after the last vote, why, why, why would we say that anybody got to vote?
That's what I was saying, too. That's why I was, but I thought, when you said you didn't have anything to base it on, you didn't have the scoring matrix to base.
No, we had a scoring system. I just made sure that we updated the scoring system to meet. So I have the scoring system, I can send you the whole thing, on the winery. And every application has the scoring system in.
And they did not.
They didn't.
Okay.
Yep, the abatement review committee looked over their application, looked over all of the scoring system, and as of last year, they still not.
You second it? No.
What was your motion? I'm.
Not give them the abatement.
Okay, I second.
They didn't meet the criteria.
I second.
So was there any, so the motion's on the floor to not give the winery an abatement? Any questions on that?
I will say that, again, we all voted at the time unanimously last year, it was five to zero, supporting the winery's abatement to invest $350,000 worth of equipment into their manufacturing facility. They had purchased that equipment, installed the equipment, and it is operational based on that abatement. From our standpoint of what we discussed and decided, not the scoring matrix, what we decided last year, they have complied with what we've asked them to do. So I'm gonna vote no on this motion, because they should continue to get what we promised. If that makes sense.
Which helped me state this. Steve said that it's 180, 60, 20.
Right, it's decreasing, and it's five years.
It's already decreasing per year, to take a five-year abatement.
Okay, so, so that's what we did, they just don't have any way.
Correct.
So what do we do about that issue?
We're voting on it, is what we're doing. So that there is a motion on the floor to not give the winery the tax abatement that we gave them last year, and it's been seconded. All those in favor? All those opposed?
I make the motion. I make the motion that we honor our agreement for the abatement that was given to the.
Motion's made by.
I'll second.
And so really, all that means is that next year, Owen Valley Winery will not go before the abatement review committee, that the county council will be solely responsible in making that decision to the DLGF.
Okay. All those in favor?
Who seconded?
Stever and.
Can't be both. Andy.
Steve? Okay, so all those in favor? All those opposed? Okay, motion carried. Health Department.
Thank you, Marcy, and the committee. Thanks, guys. Thank you.
So you sort of, you have time of.
Hello.
Hello. Okay, so I have a couple of additional appropriations. So when we got the HFI money, we knew that the 1206 fund and the 1168 was gonna go away. We finally got word from the state that we could go ahead and use what was left in the 1206, which was 12,024,386. I just need that appropriated. I turned in the sheets to you guys, because that money's just in limbo, so, now that we know that they're gonna let us use them. And then also, I noticed that there was a fund, 8901, which was COVID tobacco, back in 2020, when COVID came around, Sheila had moved $20,000 into, or from the tobacco fund into a special COVID fund, so we could buy PPE for the county. Well, there was still $13,754 in that fund, that's just sitting there, and has been since 2020. I would like to move that also into the 1159 general fund, to help offset what we will be short until the tax settlement for our salaries.
So you're asking for a transfer to two different funds?
Yeah.
To cover, to put you in the red.
We'll be in the red in our general fund.
You're in, you're in the red.
We are in the red, until we get our tax settlement in June, so.
But this will, if you transfer.
Some of it will offset it, the rest of it will have to come from the 4911, which you should have all three of those.
But that rectifies that.
Right.
But that rectifies that.
Yes.
Sheila has worked with Christine on this, that has been vetted through, one of the things that Sheila mentioned was that there perhaps need to be a resolution for borrowing, is that correct?
We'll change on the next meeting, because you had to make a decision tonight on what you were gonna use to move where, put into that resolution.
Okay, you're saying Sheila, the resolution would be how they borrow internally?
Yes.
Okay. I make a motion then that we grant the two transfers as she asked, one in the amount of $12,240,860, the other one in the amount of $13,7425. You've got a third one here that I didn't put there, I'm not going to deal with that for additional.
Okay, so a motion's been made, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Andy. Any questions?
So the motion is to allow the transfers as presented?
Correct.
Plus the resolution to borrow, per Sheila's recommendation? Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
All right, any questions?
Can we do the resolution, one, you'll have to have your attorney write it out, unless one of you wanna try? But because I'm afraid we're gonna do this again, October, November, until the next round of settlement hits, at least make it until, effective until December 31st, so she doesn't have to come back.
I have a question about the borrowing. I guess I didn't realize I was borrowing, I thought I was just using, not money. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna get paid back when we get our tax settlement? Is that what you're saying? Back into the 4911?
Yes, you have to pay it back.
Okay, okay. I didn't realize that.
You don't want, you don't want to bleep your 4911.
Right.
So when settlement hits in the next few weeks, we figured it, when I figured it, if we did five months, or five weeks, and pays, because we're not sure exactly when settlement's gonna hit, so she doesn't have to come back. But she's got to get her money replenished in 4911, and this is two ways to offset them and pay them back when it comes in.
So I have a question on this red stuff. I thought, a long time ago, we made a motion to at least, for a friendly thing, that we need to see if folks are going in the red, okay, individual department. And so she's obviously there, so is there a way we can get a status update monthly? Because they're not supposed to, correct?
That's correct, but we knew this was gonna happen.
This is the first I've heard of.
Well, we had a meeting.
Remember, we have the 1782 notice at the end of the year. There were certain funds, we couldn't shift levy capacity to, health was one of them, not by a huge dollar amount, but health was one of them, and we knew that mid-year, there were gonna be a cash flow problem. We're gonna have to either come up with the money from somewhere else, or we're gonna have to.
My question is, is there any others?
That the money is sufficient.
Is there any others that are in this number?
I think there are.
Only grant runs, which are allowed to be, and the health department has, or four of those, too. Those are renewed.
Then false alarm.
Okay.
This is no surprise.
Right, yeah, we knew this was gonna happen, so.
They're gonna get their full budget, they were budgeted $120,000, and they will get that, it just won't meet the January, June, or July 10th of what. So, so again, when you do your resolution, if you make it until December 31st, you're sure again, we'll carry the same things forward, so that they're not rolling away in the year anymore.
I don't care, I call for it.
Yes. All those in favor? Motion carried.
So Paulie will engage with the attorney to have the resolution made for the borrowing, so, she won.
Okay.
On the next transfer.
Oh, oh, that's her.
You had three.
Right.
We looked at two. The next one, I'm unclear. Pay estimate is 60,000, is that right? $6,040. But then the total, you have $30,200 in savings.
So that's 6,000 per.
That's per pay.
Per pay.
Because it's paying.
For a total of 30.
Okay, for a total, okay, then, then this account, what is a dollar shortage on it?
That's the one we were just talking about, the 1159. That's the one we were just talking about, the eleven fifty-nine fund.
Okay, I apologize, it's hard for me to hear.
Just the resolutions for, to pay them back when the settlement money comes in. That was one of the two transfers that you just did.
Then do we need to make a transfer tonight?
We just did.
We, okay, okay. And I was out in left field.
But you do need to give the additional appropriation.
Right, for the twelve oh six fund.
Okay.
Which I need.
So you're okay?
I'm okay.
Okay, it's kind of confusing sometimes, you guys got.
Yeah, we do.
Now, Chair, as soon as we're finished here, can we take a few minutes break?
So I'm going to make a motion that we proceed and advertise then for the amount as presented for the appropriation of Fund twelve oh six.
I second that.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick, any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can we do the one more before we take?
Sure, sure.
Are you needing to take a break yet?
Who is it?
Are you needing to take a break?
I, I'd like to, yeah.
Can we make it through one more, or?
She, she really wants you to hold it.
Are you sure, okay, well.
That's why I got my trip.
All right. Go ahead, come on, I think these.
She whispered that these seats were plastic for her.
I would be so quick, because none of this money that I'm going to ask for tonight to use out of my twelve twenty-two nine-one-one fund comes from the county, right? So it's a, I'm proposing that we upgrade a software for the dispatch center. They currently run a standalone version, but this, the upgraded version will be a time savings for the dispatchers, and also we can customize the program, and also there's a quality assurance aspect to it, to where I can, it's a matrix, so I can start grading their calls, so that we have a standard of service. So again, no cost to the county, I have money in my twelve twenty-two fund that comes from the state. You can see the, the cost in front of you, and then it's also, so the program talks to CAD, which it doesn't right now. So anything that the dispatcher types in the program, it directly feeds into CAD, and then the units in the field, like the sheriff's deputies, they can see it on their mobile data computers. And so it's for fire, law enforcement, and the medical questions that we ask pre-arrival. So they can see the question, and then they can see the answer below as they're responding to the call.
Now, they go along with what we talked about last month?
No.
Then, that's a different system?
No.
I think you're referring to the thirty thousand dollar Central Square.
Yes.
That's unrelated to this.
Correct, but this program talks to them.
It's the same co, yeah, it's connected, but it's not the same issue.
It's the CAD system.
Okay.
Yeah, so this, these two programs will now talk to each other going forward. And as you can see, I negotiated them down a little bit, which is always helpful. But I'd like to move forward with this purchase, and it's going to take a couple of months to get up and running because I have to work closely with their developers, and, and then they implement it into our CAD system.
So do you need any action from us, or?
Uh, yeah, because it comes out of the twelve twenty-two fund, and anytime I spend money, I need county.
How much is in that fund, Sheila? I can look, Erica.
Two hundred and fifty-eight thousand nine.
Oh, you're in good shape, okay.
The additional appropriation.
Then I make a motion that we grant her request, what was it, twenty thousand?
A little bit more than that.
One twenty?
So the, the negotiated rate was forty-five thousand. There's an annual subscription fee, but twelve twenty-two funds also pay for the annual subscription fee for both Total Response and the CAD interface through Central Square and ZERK.
So this is going to work together with?
Together.
Okay.
So it was forty-five thousand for the Total Response, because the first annual subscription year was waived.
Correct, it's built in, yeah.
So we don't need to worry about that.
Correct.
And then it was the five thousand for the CAD and the twenty-one twenty forty for the subscription.
The annual subscription, yes.
So the grand total is fifty-two thousand one twenty forty.
So the annual subscriptions won't be paid this year.
Okay.
They won't go into effect until.
Either for the CAD.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, it didn't show that on the quote, why?
So we, I would pay the interface cost of, for the CAD of five thousand plus the forty-five, so I'm right at.
Okay, fifty?
Fifty, yeah.
All right, so you have the.
Nick, the appropriation, it'd be fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
And I'll second that.
Okay.
Any other questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you.
All right, Nick, you want to take your five-minute break now?
Yes, please.
Right.
Yeah.
We'll be back.
Seven minutes.
Yeah.
Seven-minute break, that's what we got, we got five in school.
We're taking. Well, the one we presented, well, it's. And. One, I need to know, we're going to have to. Tonight, we're going to be seeing a real light business. I, I, I'm just sorry, the time, the final, what, committee, and then that final, the report that we.
What I think is, the employee portion of that takes up such a.
Yeah.
And that takes up a lot of space.
Or general. From the way. I'm not seeing. I don't know.
I call our meeting back to order.
You don't call me, I said text me.
Next on our agenda is Sheriff's Department job descriptions.
All right, this is easy. We got taken some action to create a deputy position for DARE SRO. It required a job description. We also took action identifying a specialty jail officer position a few months back. And just to be sure we've got our bases covered, we need to just go ahead and make sure we adopt the job description for the record. So there's two job descriptions, and we just need a motion to adopt. I make that motion?
Motion made by Nick, seconded by Andy, any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, on to CASA. Hey Beth.
She got here early this evening.
And the officer goes, what, I've seen you this early, usually. No, you don't.
Yeah, no, I don't lie to you, Beth.
Yes, I said I can have all the good intentions and walk out the door, get a follow-up, and then it's all changed for today. So I am, well, first of all, I want to tell you all and tell them how much I appreciate having been CASA Director all these years, thirteen years in August, and appreciate the support and the help of everyone for that. But I want to let you know that I will be retiring as the Director this year.
Oh, wow, well, thank you for your service, Beth.
Thank you.
I had to continue to be a support and a help to the new Director in any way I can, and I will then change my role to become CASA volunteer as well.
There you go.
And so, and I'll be remaining with the program and in the role of the volunteer. Now Judge Hanlon has given the blessing of approval for our current staff member, our CASA Child Contact Specialist, Jonna Lewis, to step into the Director's position of the program as of January first, two thousand fifteen. Jonna will be training and working alongside with me from June first to December first as she transitions to that role. She will also be continuing this year in her current staff position of Child Contact Specialist, so she will continue to do that job and receive her pay for that. But I'm requesting right now an additional appropriation for twelve thousand five hundred dollars from our existing CASA Fund one-two-one-two to go into the one-two-one-two training line.
Item in the budget at this time in order to pay Jonna additionally for her training period from June first to December thirty-first. She will be working side by side with me and learning all the ropes. And it'll, it, it really almost takes an entire year to do that, to follow through on all the reporting, and what state and national have us do and so forth, but I'm going to be right there to help her, you know, beyond and whatever she needs to do time-wise, and, and I will not receive any pay for that as of January first of next year. So this would, this twelve thousand five hundred would be put into the training line at this time so that we do not have to redo any contracts, because these are contracted positions, GL, Child Contact Specialist, and the Director, and our Training Coordinator, those are all contracted positions, so there are no benefits and no taxes, everybody's, you know, on their own, on that sort of thing. And so it would be broken, that twelve-five would be broken out and divided out for six months to be additional pay for her and for her work in training this next six months to transition over to the Director's position. Right now, the CASA Fund one-two-one-two has currently two hundred and nine thousand dollars in it. So come next year, or actually at budget time, we will be discussing what the new Director's salary would be, and she wants to continue taking cases as Director, which I believe.
I believe that she could manage. She won't take up to 30 cases like she currently does, but she will be. So we will talk more at that time about what CASA would like to see her receive as a Director per year. And I will just say that I do believe that probably the CASA Director's position in Owen County is the least paid of all the killings in Owen County. And I'm fine with that. When I took this position 13 years ago, this is a matter of the heart for me too. But I would, in order to get good people in the future in the Director's position and get the kind of longevity that I would like to see for a qualified person to do that, I believe we're going to need to pay her more. So we've got a good reserve to do that with. And for right now, it's the $12,500 that I'm asking for an additional appropriation for. I do have the actual paperwork with me.
Did you want to move from $12,12 to $12,12?
No, yes. Well, $12,12 is the total in $12,12. What I would like to see that do is appropriate to the budget to the line item for training. And I will pay her out of that portion out of training.
So you want $500 moved out of $12,12 to the line item?
Yeah, within $12,12 moved to the line item in $12,1232900, which is the Training Line Item.
Sheila, did you ever do that before?
Well, it's an appropriation of her cash balance.
Yeah. Yeah. So I will give this to Sheila or?
Paula's got it. I'm going to make a motion that we proceed with the appropriation, $12,500 for Fund $12,12 as presented.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You did a good job. Congratulations.
All right, so Owen Waters decided to move it to next line?
Yes, and I do have a brief update for her with her having left. So generally, what she has put together for you is a letter and some grant information she would like to consider at our June meeting. So nothing needed today. And generally, just in a nutshell, there was a grant that was applied for several years ago that has finally come to a point where it's actually been awarded. The catch is there's a match needed for that.
It's not.
And it's significant.
Anton, what she explained to me today, it's not a match. It's the $100,000 grant was already awarded. The money's in there. The whole project.
It's to make up the difference.
Yeah. The whole project was going to cost anywhere from $160,000 to $190,000, and so she needs.
She wants the difference.
Right.
Yes.
But she is going to go to the Town Council and tourism, and there was one other, that she's going to try to get some of, you know, some money from all of it, and then come back in June and tell us where she's at.
I looked at this earlier and looked at the numbers, and I thought they were mostly exorbitant, because I happen to know what some of this is already cost. Mobilization of $11,000 is about $5,000, $6,000 too much. The life states vary. I bought them yesterday for 62 cents a piece. He's got a better $2. My whole thing was going to be, when this come up, I was going to say, we need a quote done rather than going by this estimate, because this assessment's not even remotely correct.
I think that's what she is getting certain.
Anyway, we're going to talk about it in depth next, in June and decide, so.
I think that's what she's trying to do.
Yeah.
Get a quote before then, didn't she?
Let's, can we move on?
Yeah.
Probation transfer request.
I'm going to make a motion that we do the transfers as presented.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
So judicial salary increase, you've got the email, essentially with the state having upped or given raises to state judicial officers. By default, some of the other positions that are county-paid have to go up as well. That includes the position of Sheriff, Chief Deputy, and Jail Commander. Those are tied in. So there's a detailed email with all the dollars and the impact that would have to Fund 1170. She was aware of it. There's going to be a prorata figure because we only need it for six months of the year, and that will need to be in the form of an appropriation.
What about the appropriation officer?
They are not connected. They do follow a regular calendar year.
Good question.
That is a good question, but they're not impacted by this part. So I'm going to make a motion that we proceed in doing an appropriation for an amount up to whatever the auditor comes up with for the prorata balance of the 24 budget year for those positions.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Are there any questions on this?
There shouldn't be, because we don't have a choice.
Right. All those in favor? Motion carried. Community Crossing's Grant.
Good evening, Counsel. Adam Warner-Gray. I spoke with Sheila before I was put on the agenda. We decided that since I'd already submitted paperwork on this back in January, that I didn't really need to do that again. I just needed to come back in front of you. As I think all of you are aware, I came before you in January, and because of the Governor's pilot program with Community Crossing, we had a chance to get another half a million dollars in road work done. Counsel allowed me to use security with my local road and street fund. I am back in front of you this evening to ask that you consider appropriation from the same location where the $333,333 came from in regard to the Community Crossing Grant match. We will be doing just short of $2 million worth of work, $30,000 worth of $2 million worth of work on roads this year. Thanks to that grant.
So you're wanting, congratulations, by the way.
Thank you.
You're wanting an additional appropriation to make up the difference between what we budgeted in the Edit Fund, which was $333,333, make up the difference so it takes it to half a million for the match.
That is correct.
So I'm going to make a motion that we proceed an advertisement from the Edit Fund for $166,667.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
Thank you, Counsel.
Thank you very much.
Additional appropriation requests.
So I've got good news on this one. The original request for jury from the Circuit Court was for about $20,000, and that's because they've had an increase in jury trials. So their jury expense has gone up. And it's to the point where that line item, I believe, is in the red, so they have to bring it out of the red. And then they also anticipate a number of jury trials between now and the end of the year. So they came up with an estimate of $20,000. When I talked with them and we reviewed some funds, there's actually a jury expense fund, and that's Fund 2600 that has a balance of a little over $19,000. And by law, we're allowed to use that to cover that cost. So I propose, and it's okay with the court, to appropriate, appropriate out of Fund 2600 up to the balance of that fund that's available. And then they were fine with that. It was close enough to $20,000. It was only partly an estimate, so they're good with that. So that's my motion.
Motion made by Anton. Is there a second? Seconded by Nick. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried.
The other part of that was the court interpreter. There was a request for, we've done those before, it was only $120. They want to appropriate that out of a grant and into their line item for paying for the interpreter. And then the Sheriff's Department has two requests out of the Fund 1170 for uniforms and printing that they said they have shortfalls on. So those are your three remaining appropriations.
Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the appropriation.
Motion made by Andy. Is there a second? Seconded by Verl. Are there any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Okay, on to salary ordinance confirmation summaries.
I'm going to make a motion, we approve the salary confirmation summaries as presented.
Motion made by Anton, seconded by Andy. Any questions? All those in favor? Motion carried. Elected official and department head comments.
Yeah.
Beard.
I've got two hats to put on. First one is elected official, next one is public. Right now, I'm wearing my elected official. And the Township Trustee, I'm Mary Margaret Jackson, Township Home Care. As elected official, I have, I got voted in by people, and then my board was voted in by people, right? And if you look at these economic development ideas with districts and regionalism, you've got a big bunch of people there who like a unit of government, which I consider to be a unit of government. I can borrow money, sign contracts, I can do all kinds of neat stuff, okay? These same people could do the same thing in term of, but you didn't elect them. And so when we talk about districts and the regionalism, you know, things like that, what I'm trying to convey to you is the concept that I would live in a republic than I would have lived in a socialistic, progressive Democratic Party deal where a bunch of unelected people get to bond, get to make contracts, and stuff that the people didn't vote for. And that's, that's my, I'm done with my, my hat.
All right, any other elected official and department head? Okay, no. Public comment.
The next guy I live on is a public, just name, I'll speak for anybody else with name. One of the things that I noticed that seemed to be, you know, in the atmosphere of the last three or four meetings, is this conceptual idea that, oh yeah, we're going to build this jail, and we're going to have this big building, and we're going to have this department in it, that department, we're going to have this agency in it, and this, you know. Here's the deal. If you have a gas explosion, if you have an earthquake, if you have a giant flood that you didn't count on, or something goes wrong, you know, so all of a sudden you've got all your eggs in one basket, and you're just wiped out, five or six departments all in one shop, okay? And so I know it's probably more expensive to have places for all the different departments in different areas, but I don't like the idea of all my security people and all my medical people, all being in one building, which is subject to some type of a disaster that we didn't count on, but it happened anyway. And then all of a sudden, they're just gone. So I don't like the idea of, from a citizen's standpoint, about putting all your eggs in one basket.
Any other public comment?
It's good to see Troy here tonight.
Yeah.
Didn't know what you were getting through, you two. Sheila, you got something, anything to say?
State House Counsel meeting, June 22nd. I'll send an ad for it to y'all, but let me know as soon as possible to get you registered if you want to go.
Verl wants to know if it's at a casino.
It is not. But if you bring your money, I'll take it. Anderson is not that far away, so just keep that in mind.
Anything else, Sheila? Okay, counsel comments.
Couple of quick things. It'd be nice to formalize a Fund 1237 budget. We had approved the Dare Officer, SRO. We probably should have just a budget line items with the salary, FICA, or those kind of things. Sheila, is that something maybe we can have drafted for the June meeting, just for our record? And then we, in budget preparation for our meeting on Monday, I don't know, Counselwoman Chesser, if you had a specific structure for that, but I've got some things that I could maybe email as far as like a list
Okay.
of probably some key things that we should probably at least think about. Just to rattle a few off, things like possible lit adjustment, the Health Department match for next year, talking about that, what we want to do with wages and salaries, the DLGF suggestions from our February meeting involving advertisement and prep, community grants, rural transit, tax cap losses. There's a lot of things we want to talk about and think ahead on before we get to our budget workshops, so we're not ill-prepared for some of the decisions we'll need to make.
Are we going to, are we going to deal with any other issue other than kind of just a work session that we're having?
It's just a budget planning session.
Okay, so we're not dealing with any more, I mean?
No other agenda items, yeah.
I've got a comment. In almost 10 years, I've missed less than a handful of meetings. And next month, I will be in New York at our meeting time. What I would suggest you do is think of all the things that I hate and disdain for.
Andy's do not touch.
Okay, if that, if there's nothing further. Yes. Yes, she is.
And she should have lapsed a long time ago.
She is, she's having heart problems, so she's in AFib right now, so they've got that under control, thankfully, or I wouldn't be here.
You want to say a prayer real quick?
Thank you, thank you. That would be wonderful. I would appreciate it.
We're involved coming forward tonight. We just left up Paulie's mom, took you and the family, along with the Christian Rist's mom and their family. Both of them are in the hospital and hospice. We know that you have a great plan, and we just want to follow your will, lead us by a spirit, Father God. Please watch over the family. Touch them, rest assured that you've got things under control with Jesus.
Amen. Thank you, Saint.
Real quick, we brought in right at $98,000 in settlement, and within a couple of weeks we have it.
Great.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes, thank you, thank you, thank you.